First up, well, I guess officially call the January of 2025 meeting to order. And we have, we can start our meeting like we try to every month, we can, for Cheers for Peers. So Andrea, take it away.
Okay, well, so this is the fun part, right? And if some people don't know that we're doing a reception to celebrate Cheers for Peers winners before the board meeting, so the board has an opportunity to talk to them. So we have many of the people, recipients of the award here tonight, which thank you guys so much for coming. And then I will get into the nominations as the language celebrating these individuals, because what a pleasure it is to celebrate our staff who are just amazing in this district. So first up is Kirsten Talantino. She is a special ed teacher at EP Rock. She's worked for the district for eight years. She has been an amazing mentor and friend to me, beginning, and she was nominated by Ally Kral. Beginning with my student teaching experience as my cooperating teacher last spring, she continues to show up for me, problem solve with me, encourage me as a first year teacher. She is everything I want to be as an educator and has been amazing role model to look up to. She has played a fundamental role in my teaching journey, and I feel lucky to know her. It is a privilege to work with her. She makes EP Rock and the Hudson School District a better place. Next up is Amy Weichel. Amy is a family consumer teacher, science teacher at the high school. She's worked in the district for 13 years. She has gone above and nominated by Hannah Tim. She has gone above and beyond, leading the FCS department with three new, three new FCS teachers. She is always a listening ear and a form of support. She especially has helped guide me in my first year teaching with providing resources, ideas, and encouragement. She makes this a positive and fun place to work, which we'd love to hear. Then we have Brett Weinfurter. He is a teacher at the high school, a business teacher at the high school, and he's worked in the district for three years, and he was nominated by Ashley Blum. Brett is a dedicated impactful educator who has cultivated exceptional relationships with his students. His classroom is a hub of connection, where students seek him out before school, during passing times, and after school. Brett goes above and beyond to create additional opportunities for students to showcase their skills. His excellence has been recognized as the Wisconsin Business Marketing Educators Conference, where he was honored as a Marketing Teacher of the Year. I remember that a couple months back here at the board meeting. Then we have Dia Hoffman. She is a special ed para at the high school. She's worked in the district for 12 years, and she was nominated by Erin Garing. Dia is a bright spot in so many students' and adults' days, including mine. I have been in many classes when she is working with students, and Dia will work with any student that needs a support, but also make sure she connects each day with each student that needs to be connected with. Her kindness bleeds into everything that she does, and our students are lucky to have such a caring and thoughtful person to support their success in classes all over our building. Then we have Joy Haig. She is a science teacher at the high school, worked in for the district for 21 years, and she was nominated by Veronica Ellingson and another coworker. Her name fits her to a T. Love that. She is always joyful and upbeat. Joy always has a smile on her even when times are tough. She is a constant source of encouragement. She is an outstanding educator, constantly tweaking her plans and lessons with the students in mind, and shares her thoughts and resources freely. It is no surprise everyone in our area goes to her for anything, to eat lunch, to talk, for teaching advice. She is the glue in our cheerleader. She is an outstanding teacher and colleague. Then we have Rhonda O'Brien. She is a reading para at Holton, and she's worked in the district for two years. She was nominated by Ellen Gorman. Rhonda is phenomenal. She is so caring about the students she works with and does truly what is best for kids. When time for intervention, students hop right up and happily go. She makes intervention something that kids look forward to. She makes kids feel successful and confident in areas they may struggle in. We're so lucky to have her at Holton Elementary. Then we have Laney Woolworth. She is a special ed teacher at Prairie, and this is her very first year as a teacher and in our district. She was nominated by Jen Ostertheg and another coworker. Laney has been a great addition to the special ed team here at Hudson Prairie. She is compassionate, caring, and kind to her coworkers as well as her students. Laney is an amazing communicator among staff and keeps everyone involved with students' needs as they arise. The hard work and positive attitude she comes to work with every day does not go unnoticed. She'll advocate for herself and her students when need be. Her students look up to her and enjoy spending time learning with her. She is a joy to have on our Hudson Prairie team. And then we have Paul Crayson. He is a music teacher at Hudson Prairie. He's worked for the district for 16 years and was nominated by Jody Youngman. Sorry, take a breath. Okay. Paul has a way of lightening the mood, especially when things get stressful. He tends to take everything that is thrown at him in stride with a joke or two thrown in. This week, while working with a grade level for their concert, he is taking double classes to cover for a colleague. He puts on six concerts, fifth grade choral festival, teaches multiple instruments, and more. He volunteers to be a part of PBIS awards, even taking a pie to the face last month. Then we have Charmaine Lindberg. She is a language arts teacher at the middle school and has worked in the district for 18 years, and she is set to retire at the end of this year. She was nominated by Tony Benlin. Charmaine has such a caring heart and a passion for teaching. Working with her as I do has allowed me to see firsthand how she pours her heart and soul into helping her students not just grow academically, but also personally. She is one of the best examples I know of, that know of someone who teaches the whole child. As a colleague of hers, I know I can depend on her for creative idea to use in our classrooms, go to her for advice and a good laugh, and collaborate with her to find the best way to teach our students. Charmaine is a gem, and I'm lucky to call her my colleague and blessed to call her my friend. Then we have Erin Seitz. She is a reading teacher at the middle school, has worked in the district for three years. She was nominated by multiple coworkers. Erin is a wealth of knowledge on the best strategies and tools to help students of all reading levels, and she wants to be in the classroom whenever she can, helping all students. She jumps in at every opportunity and goes above and beyond when it comes to helping our students develop their reading. She develops great connections with kids both on and off her caseload and is truly and deeply inspiring. She brings a bright and shining light to our school community, and she makes Hudson Middle School a wonderful place to be. Then we have Amy Anderson. She is an SLB speech-language pathologist at Rivercrest in early childhood. She has worked in the district for 11 years. She was nominated by Natalie Duncan. Amy has been an amazing mentor to not only myself as a student, I am her practicum student, but also new staff. She is welcome to questions and never makes you feel like you're a burden for asking them. She uses her experience as a guide to light, to lead new staff in the right direction. Thank, thank you for all you do, Amy. Then we have Adam Tulkey. He is a music teacher at Willow River and has worked in the district for three years. He was nominated by Melena Weisman. Adam has been so helpful and welcoming with my transition to teaching at Willow. He takes time out of his already busy schedule to lend a helping hand, answer questions, or to just have a friendly chat. I truly appreciate his compassion and willingness to help. Then Linda Wagner. So Linda is a third grade teacher at Willow River. She has worked for the district for 27 years and was nominated by Deanna Roaring. Linda has built a strong community within her four walls, where kids are encouraged to be themselves, make mistakes, and uplift each other. This year has brought a lot of different abilities into Linda's room, where she has actively collaborated with the case manager to carry out different accommodations and modifications that help all learners. Linda sees the good in all kids and is willing to meet their needs. I am proud to work with her every day. Then we have Dan Weickerting. He is a head custodian at North Hudson and has worked in the district for 20 years. He was nominated by Kristen Arons and Sarah Zesa. Dan is always willing to help whenever he can and in a very timely manner. His attitude is always positive and is funny and kind. Our school would be lost without him. The cleanliness and efficiency of the building helps to keep everything running smoothly. We are very lucky to have him. He is always there to help with a smile and kind words. Thank you, Dan, so very much for all you do for the North Hudson and Holton Elementary families. There's all the recipients of the Cheers for Peers Award. Important to note that we had over 100 nominations for this award, and we do very purposely try to pick different people every month, but I will say Dan is the first double recipient. So it's been a couple years, and he just keeps coming up as somebody that people are nominating. So wanted to point that out. And we'll also be sharing with the board all of the nominations, as well as sharing with the, all the staff that received a nomination from a coworker. We share it with them. We just, some have asked for them to be anonymous, so once we do that part, we'll share them all out with you guys, so you guys can read them in total. So these are just summaries of the nominations as I read through it.
Thank you. Let's give them all round of applause. We've been doing this for more than a couple of years now, and I think it's grown to be something very fitting for them to get recognition like that, and I like the way that you do it with sprinkling all different areas of service to our Hudson team of staff. So, all right. Next up is citizens' request to speak about non-action items. Just to remind folks, the public is welcome to have input, whether it's agenda items or non-agenda items. It's been a few months since I read our rules and that have our policy, so I want to reiterate that now. So public comment is for input only. It is not a question-answer session, a time-for-debate, or a dialogue session. Members of the school board will not respond directly to public comments that are made at this meeting. No specific action will be taken at this meeting in response to comments that are made or issues that are raised during the public comment period. If the board determines that action is appropriate, that action will occur at a future board meeting. A district representative may follow up with you after the meeting. The board chair will recognize one speaker at a time. Only those speakers who are recognized will be permitted to speak. Individuals who interfere with or interrupt speakers, the board, or the proceedings may be directed to leave. Personal attacks on any individual, including any other speaker during the public comment session, are unacceptable, as are obscenities or profanity. Like, I need to say that, but, but I have to. So persistence in making such remarks will end the individual's opportunity to address the board and may result in the individual being directed to leave. So that's just kind of a summary. With that, I would also like to add that anyone who wants to, wants to, you know, give input to the board can do so in writing, and you actually have an opportunity then to have some more immediate feedback, so to speak. But submitting something in writing doesn't preclude you from public comments and vice versa. It just, you know, it's appreciated either way. So with that, I'm getting a signal we might have a couple more filling out forms, so I'm just going to take, first up, Scott Ellingson, Hudson resident, and you want to speak about potential referendum. So if we have two more people in addition to the two that submitted, I am going to allow the full three minutes, if you need it. Go ahead.
Yeah, my comments are about the referendum and a few potential cuts. So first of all, I just want to say that I really appreciate the work that all of you do, and that you have some incredibly difficult decisions ahead of you. And I come to you as a longtime teacher, parent, and teacher leader. So for the referendum, I really want to encourage you to go to referendum again this April. Aside from growing our enrollment, the best way to handle our current budget challenges is to increase revenue, and unfortunately, we also do have to talk about making some prudent budget cuts. Yes, the community has spoken twice on this issue, but I believe that we can do an even better job making the case for the referendum. I will, and I personally, and hopefully other teachers that I work with, educators, will do all that we can to help have a strong, active, and diverse yes committee. A 7-0 board vote would send the strongest message to the community. The board's persistence on this issue is consistent with its fiduciary responsibility to make Hudson schools successful. So a couple of comments about a few potential cuts. Closing Willow and Holton. At our last board meeting, Bob Baumann talked about the context behind each potential budget cut. It's important that all Hudson families know that if one or two schools are closed, it won't be just Willow and Holton families that are impacted. All families and all buildings could be impacted due to the impending reboundering that would be needed. A few years ago, in the Hudson High School auditorium, we heard the emotional stories and context behind the potential closure of Willow and Holton. Personally, as a former Willow parent, I would encourage you to explore every creative option to keep both schools open. Maybe Holton could be a magnet school. Mention has been made about Willow being the 4K center for the district. Working to increase 4K enrollment and expanding all-day options could increase much-needed revenue. Let's look into this and other creative, possible, maybe even public-private options. Finally, retiree health insurance. Last board meeting, it was mentioned as something that we should, that the board should maybe look at. Our current retirees worked hard and long for our district, serving thousands of students and their families. If they are put into a separate pool on their own health insurance, their costs would skyrocket. When we have active employees that experience costly diseases and/or surgeries, we don't put them in their own pool. Our retirees and future retirees deserve the same treatment. Thank you so much for your hard work and your time. Let's keep the discussions going. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, and you had one second to spare, Scott, so good job, good job on timing there. I want to just clarify too, as I had indicated before, we welcome comments whether agenda or not. Usually when it's a non-agenda item, we take it at this portion of the meeting, but if it's on the agenda, we would postpone it to where it's at. But you were creative, and you combined agenda item with a non-agenda item. Just to clarify, on our possible discussion, an action today is only about potential referendum. It's not about budget cuts. Those are not going to be discussed or acted upon today. All right? They may be generally referred to in a comment about referendum, but it's not, specific cuts certainly aren't going to be addressed today. All right, next up, I think it was Betty Caruso was next. She's a Hudson resident.
Hi.
You have three minutes.
Thank you. I don't think I'll need it, but I'm Betty Caruso. Wasn't really planning on saying anything tonight, so I'm not really prepared as good as Mr. Ellingson was. Just a few points that I want to make. I'm a finance director for the last 30-some years of government, so I know how hard it's been for you guys to come together and define budget cuts and how do you, how do you approach it, especially when your biggest portion of your budget is personnel? So I know that it's been a tough job for you, and I appreciate everything you did, especially defining all those different areas. The thing is, we know that there's a big deficit, and the easiest way is to look at closing those two schools, or, and I think that would be a shame, and I think the impact on the whole school district isn't really understood by the people. I think there's a couple of things I'd like you to reconsider going for the referendum. I think when we ran, when we had the referendum out in November, the election was a big deal as a national election. I don't know about all of you, but I had probably 40 pieces of mailing every day that I just took and tossed. I noticed that the school had a nice mailing, and I did read that one when it came through, but I don't know if the public was actually taking the time to read and to understand. I think a lot of people might have gone into the booth seeing, oh, a tax increase, I'm going to knock it off. I think reconsidering the referendum, we could do a better job in educating people. If it's going to cost me $20 a year to $25 a year for a $400,000 to $500,000 home, please, I spend that at Starbucks. So I don't think if people understood the impact it was going to have and how much it really is out of their pocket to keep things in a better situation, to keep our schools operating on a fine level that they are. I think neighborhood schools are very important. I think Holton, to put kids on that bus and trace them into the North Hudson or wherever you can trace them, when they're kindergartners and 40-minute bus ride, is that to the benefit. I think you got to find school out in Holton, I think, was it advertising number seven in the state? Why would we close something that's so good? I live in the area of the Willow School. Unbelievable, the kids walking to school, the community that you get with that, the neighborhoods, the friends that play with each other. There's more to school than just education, and so I would think it'd be a shame to take that away. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Next up is Cynthia Wells O'Malley, Hudson resident, talking about Willow River.
Hi, my name is Cindy Wells O'Malley. I live in Third Street in Hudson. My background is, I'm a social worker and a program evaluator for United Way. I had allocations, decision-making for $10 to $12 million annually, including evaluating approximately one to 150 programs each year. So I completely appreciate all the work and consideration you have put in your budget. It must be a challenge for you. I live on Third Street. I've lived on Third Street for 40 years. I would like to also agree with Scott and Betty in terms of the topics that they brought up. An additional $20 a year, if that's what we're looking at on Third Street or in our area, even if it's 50, we spend more on that on Halloween candy. I saw people, I see a lot of cuts in kids every year, but it's that, that would be something I would want to invest in. These are my kids of my future. And also, for a time period, I worked for the St. Paul Public School District, School District. I worked in a school that half of the children were bust from other parts of the city, and those children did not do well. They were confused, they didn't have a home place, they didn't have their buddies, and they were scattered. If we can avoid that, if there's something that we can do as a neighborhood to enrich our neighborhood and to help the school district, I would gladly do that, and I would put my dollars behind you. So thank you for your time. I appreciate the challenges that you have, but I hope you consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And then next up is Colin, it's either Marnock or Marnoch. I'm not sure which, but...
The first pronunciation was right, and there are very few who get it right on the first try, so I appreciate it. So my wife and I are parents to three boys in Holton. I think that it's really important to keep in mind that neighborhood schools are extremely important, and I would echo many of the things that the last couple folks have said, and they were very articulate in saying them. I think one of the reasons that we're talking, that we're here today, we've cited lower enrollments, and I think it was not much more than 10 years ago or so that, and I, my wife and I have lived in Holton for three years now. So I understand that there was some type of research that was done on populations at the time when the high school had its improvements, and those, that data then showed increasing populations. And we're only 10 years later, and I would imagine that those forecasts went out five to 10 years, and now we're showing declining enrollments. My concern is, is that populations are cyclical, and shutting these schools down would potentially be short-sighted. In addition, some of the other options, if the schools get shut down, looking at K through second, third through fifth, depending on the school, where the schools might be. Our boys are two years apart, and we find it very valuable for them to share the same walls at periods of time throughout their schooling. So to have one leave the school and another enter the school, and another leave the school while another one enters the school is sort of disheartening as a parent who looks forward to their child attending an institution that is so well thought of and part of the main reason that we sought out the north side of Hudson to live in. I've also found data supporting the fact that referendums that are on ballots at the same time as presidential in congressional elections statistically have a lesser chance of passing because of voter fatigue that another person mentioned as well earlier tonight. So I'll finish by imploring you to vote for another opportunity, to put forward a referendum, to give this community another chance at voting in favor of this. And this time around, I can, I can say very specifically that I will do my part in getting people out to vote and helping them to understand the value of keeping these schools open. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Now we move on to the report section. We have seven reports, and first up is Bonnie, and we have our annual audit report, and the folks from Cliff, Larson, Allen are here.
Yep, so Jonathan Sherwood is here. He is our auditor, and also Tracy Lewis is our finance director, and they are going to present the audit for the 2324 school year.
Is that turned on?
I don't know. Is it on? I think it's on.
It was on?
If it's up.
Up is up. I think that's up.
All right. I think it's on.
Technical difficulties are after that. Thank you. All right. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Jonathan Sherwood. I'm a principal with Cliff and Larson Allen. I'm responsible for organizing the fieldwork, pulling together all the amounts and disclosures within your audit report. So obviously, as in years past, I've prepared just a two-page audit summary, so I'll save you some of the headaches of going through the 100-plus page of audit report, and able to just kind of go through some high-level amounts and disclosures, a few comments along the way. I did receive some early, or some comments from a board member already, and I'll work those responses into our, and call that out into my comments here. But if there's anything else that pops up and you'd like some maybe additional information on, please stop me along the way. I'm happy to go through just about anything. If I can't have the detailed information off the top of my head, Tracy's here with me, and also we have Bonnie as well, so I thank you for that. But before I get started in that, I do want to thank the School District of Hudson's finance team, all the various department heads that we work with in terms of pulling together the audited data. There's some kind of off-the-wall obscure compliance-type requests that we're required to look into, so we appreciate the due diligence and the promptness in those responses throughout the audit process. So thank you to all the staff on that one. Starting off my comments here for you on our two-page audit summary, just the independent auditor's report or the opinion, as I mentioned before, the, you know, 100-plus-page document that is the audit report, there's only basically two or three pages that really belong to, quote-unquote, belong to CLA, and that's our auditor's opinion. The rest of the financial information is that of the district. So what we do is we, you know, pull the amounts and disclosures together, and we issue an audit, our audit opinion over them, and we issue what's known as an unmodified opinion, which is also known as a clean opinion, basically staying, stating that all the amounts and the disclosures within are free of material misstatements. So it's the highest level of assurance that we're able to grant over financial statements. It's what our goal is. DPI won't accept anything less than that, so we're happy to report that we are able to achieve such opinions. Also, through our audit opinion, our audit process, we issue what's known as our management lever, management letter, or a governance letter. So if there's anything that, from an internal control standpoint, we don't necessarily audit your internal controls, but we evaluate them. And if there's anything that's of issue, that would raise to a level of deficiency that would be severe enough that we would have to bring it up at a meeting such as this, that that letter would include any of those items. We're happy to report that in fiscal year 2024, there were no findings to report, so that's a very impressive feat. A lot of the districts in western Wisconsin will at least receive one, possibly up to three comments, which are fairly routine in nature, but School District of Hudson does not have any. Also, through our audit work, we're required to perform what's known as a federal single audit, which is a compliance audit, and along with that federal requirement, there's also some state compliance that goes along with it as well. And those are program audits that look at very specific federal and state sources of revenue that come into the district. We're required to perform compliance-type audits over them. For the federal standpoint, we looked at the IDEA flow-through grants, as well as the ESAR grant. So those specific programs were detailed compliance-tested. And on the state side, the general aids would get tested every single year. There's a per-pupil adjustment aid calculation, as well as the common school funds. Through all of those program compliance testing, there were no compliance findings to report for you this evening as well. Also, as part of our audit work, we do work very closely with DPI in making sure that the 1506, which is the DPI annual report, is filed in a timely manner. And then also alongside that federal single audit, what's known, there's another reporting that we have to do for the federal audit clearinghouse, which is the data collection form, and that has also been filed in a timely manner with them as well. So that's all the reporting out of the way. The next section that I'll jump into for you is financial results, starting with your general fund. For the purposes of these, the facts are the numbers that you're seeing here. As a reminder for you, this is both Fund 10, which is typically known as your general education or your general fund, as well as Fund 27, which is specifically called out by DPI as the special education fund. So the purposes that you're seeing here of all the amounts up on the screen, Fund 10 and 27 have been combined for reporting purposes. So we have a four-year trend, which is just, again, just to highlight some things, just over that four-year period of time. If anything really jumps off the screen or jumps out of that, out of norm, for instance, I can call out a couple of just trends and different things for you, just to report it back for you. One of the questions that I had along the way is, you will notice a couple of items up there. These are balance sheet items, and your balance sheet is as of 6/30/2024, so it's a shot in time or a period in time. You will notice that there is both a due from other funds, as well as a due to other funds. One of the questions that we got is, that I, that I will respond to you for this evening is why is there both? You know, it's basically for the purposes of reporting, we're following DPI's year-end reconciling items, for lack of a better way of describing it. So what this is representing is the general fund, again, 10 and 27 activity, as well as how it relates to Fund 73, which I can comment on later, which is your OPEB trust, the other post-employment benefits. So the due-from amounts that you're seeing here is what the OPEB trust basically has to refund back to Funds 10 and 27, and then the due-to that you're seeing down below is the liability, is the year-end contributions from 10 and 27 that need to go into Fund, Fund 73 at the end of the year. So typically, in most places, it would be very common to net that activity together and show, you know, where am I coming out at? And it does net to a liability of like $83,000 or whatever it ends up being, over to Fund 73, the trust. And it does net to a liability of like $83,000 or whatever it ends up being over to Fund 73, the trust. But just the way the DPI formula lays out, it's much easier to reconcile on a year-to-year basis, which has been the case. You can see we've reported both of these items for a number of years. It's a year-on-reconciling item, and truly it is. The end of the year, the amount that's due from the trust, because Fund 10 and 27 do pay those benefits out, and then we reimburse, quote-unquote, ourselves. The trust reimburses the general fund for those disclosure, or for those amounts at the end of the year. And then we're obviously then turn around, and we have to then refund the trust for future activity. So, that's why it's kind of going in, in and out, and it is at the end of the year. Other financial highlights then for you of what is the fiscal health of the overall district for the most part for the general activities. So, again, this is general fund. We take a look at very three, three specifically highlighted cell, or rows up there, if you want to scroll down on the screen for folks. It's taking a look at your fund balance, which is also your year-end reserves. Your year-end equity is another way of saying it, or net position. For the purposes of governmental finance, we refer to that as fund balance. So, your fund balance is, falls within a number of categories here. And if you just want to boil it down to how are we doing on papers, you know, what is, what is the true reserves at the end of the year? We take a look at that unassigned fund balance row that's highlighted. Those are the true reserves, which are meant and set aside for future unbudgeted shortfalls or unexpected things coming up. So, from a standpoint of computing a ratio and kind of interpreting what that $32 million is at the end of the year, you take that and you compare it to what the general fund expenditure balance is. So, the total expenditures for the year was just over $82.5 million to operate the general education of students and operating the district. You can, you compute the percentage of unassigned fund balance to total general fund expenditures, and that just gives you what, you know, as a percentage, how much of district activity could you basically finance just straight, straight off of your reserves? So, that's usually a measuring stick to figure out how well the district is doing. The district does have a fund balance policy that, at the unassigned fund balance, should be between 25% and 30% of general fund expenditures. So, you're definitely needing that, the minimum side of that, at least 25%. It is in excess, just slightly to the, you know, the 30% of general fund expenditures. From an outside industry perspective, from a third-party reviewer of your financial statements, such as an auditor, the industry target is typically anywhere between 25% and 33% as a minimum standard. And having a, you know, a fund balance that's about that, that approximates that range does carry a number of benefits, which are also highlighted in your district fund balance policy. Number one is no short-term borrowing needs are needed to, you know, short-term line of credit, for instance, which is very common for school districts due to the cyclical nature of when state aids, federal aids come in versus when property tax collections throughout the year occur. Oftentimes, districts that fall outside of this range would have to go out and short-term borrow just to meet things like summer payrolls and whatnot in those times of when tax collections, you know, just simply aren't at the district at that point, cash flow regions. The other benefit is to cover just unbudgeted or, you know, kind of emergency-type situations where you need to have some fund balance there just to cover those unapproximated expenditures. The other major benefit there is to respond to any state or federal budget uncertainty. I know that that's a very popular one, to make sure that you build up a little bit of a fund balance in order to cover some of those short-term deficits at that point. And then lastly, it does give you flexible, flexibility in financing. If there's any capital projects or whatnot, you can then potentially not have to borrow or use up some of your debt limit if you would need to do that. And it also then benefits the district in bond rating. So, obviously, if you have a little bit more of a reserve there, you'd be, you'd be receiving much more favorable bond repayment terms in terms of either bond length or interest rates being charged there. So, overall, the 38.9% from an outside perspective, the district is fiscally healthy. And then in terms of what you're looking at in your budget-to-actual numbers, which is found in the audit report, that $82.5 million in total expenditures comes within 2.2% of budgeted expenditures. So, your budget-to-actual is very close. And that just goes to the budgets, budgetary prudency of the district. So, you're budgeting very prudently and following that budget when necessary in order to achieve a fiscally healthy status there. Any questions that I could respond back to in your general fund? Moving forward, page two here for you. This is just responding back to the rest of the activities that are not legally required to be reported within your general fund. They're required to be reported separately. So, the first are what's known as special revenue funds. In order to qualify for a special revenue fund, it has to be a restricted revenue source coming into it. So, the revenue is restricted or set aside for a very specific purpose. You have three special revenue funds that the district reports. The education trust, which is known as Fund 21 for DPI folks out there. All of those revenues are set aside and must be used for those specifically spelled-out purposes. Oftentimes, it's like gifts, donations, scholarships are all reported in Fund 21 as well. The food service fund there of just point, just over $1.3 million is set aside. That's basically all the revenue that goes in just to pay for lunches and everything, and state aids and federal aids for anything food service-related. Calling that one out specifically is another response to a question as to what that restricted net position was. So, it's set aside, and it must be used for food service purposes. And then also then would go to finance any potential capital outlay. So, if there's any food service equipment needs, would come out of that as well. And then lastly, it's designated as a restricted-for-education-and-recreational trust. That's your Fund 80s out there, so the community education programs. And overall, in a special revenue, special revenue fund, again, these are all equity balances or reserve balances from one year to the next that are restricted to use future purposes or meet future needs. Really, the biggest thing is just to keep an eye on any trend information there. If anything started off negative, say, the education and rec fund, Fund 80, back in 2021, what steps has the district done in order to turn that to be positive? Because you, again, if these are restricted financing sources coming in, if we don't have any reserves set aside to meet future needs, and you're going over budget on these activities, the board would need to take some sort of action in order to make them solvent, for lack of a better word. In 2024, everything is, you know, right where, you know, should be. And you do have, you know, the ability to meet future needs for these activities. The next item is your debt service funds. For a government finance, all of your debt service principal and interest payments are accounted for in its own, in their own separate fund. You're legally required to meet your debt service obligations. And that's what these reserves here at the end of the year are set aside for. So, the $3.7 million that is set aside or restricted are meant to be used for future debt service payments. And again, just due to, the reason that this number is, you know, significantly higher than maybe some other governmental finance system or reports that you might read out there, if anybody's so inclined, is just due to school district finance, where your fiscal policy or your fiscal year ends basically cross two calendar years and two separate tax-receeding years that set aside there. It's specifically set up to meet those next year's debt service payments. So, just for anybody keeping, keeping score at home there, for fiscal year 2024, the district paid $14.21 million in principal payments and interest payments of $3.7 million. So, your total debt service cap, or need for the year was just $17.9 million for fiscal year 2024. And I can, on the second half of the page here, I'll go over the remaining debt service issues that are still outstanding for you. The next item here is your capital projects funds. Again, these are separate, set-aside funds that are specifically meant to meet these specific capital project issues or different projects themselves. So, you do carry two of them at the end of the year. One is just known as the long-term capital projects fund. That is the lesser of the balances up there. That's just a set aside. DPI required you to fund it, give you some financial flexibility if you should need it. So, that has just been seeded for, I don't know, however many years now. I think it goes back to about 2017. That balance will just ride out there until it's ever needed or added to. The larger fund that has the more activity there is the site expansion or remodeling fund. So, that's known as your Fund 49 expenditures. Obviously, in 2023, you can see that fund balance really did jump, and that's when those bond anticipation notes were first issued back in fiscal year 23. They were refinanced essentially into general obligation bonds during 2024. And there was some, but not, you know, a significant amount of activity in your Fund 49. You incurred just over $2 million in Fund 49 expenditures for the year. Leading to the other question that I received ahead of time here is in what's known as your entity-wide statements. If you do pick up an audit report, I think it's page six. Right now, all of this information doesn't include capital assets or anything in these numbers, just because this is more of what I'll refer to as a budgetary standpoint. But in your statement of net position, it does break down, like what are the capital assets of the district? In there, it's broken down by capital assets not being depreciated, capital assets being depreciated. And the question was specifically on the capital assets not being depreciated, like what's making up this, this number? And in there is obviously land, for purposes of, you know, land is never depreciated. But then the other item in there is construction work in process. So, that's one of the biggest reasons why that number really does jump in fiscal year 24 is all of the construction activity. The C-WIP or construction work in progress approximated $3.8 million. It's made up of a myriad of different things. The construction, obviously, phases one, two, and three is kind of how the market and Johnson invoices are laid out. So, hopefully, that's fairly common nomenclature for y'all up there. So, that approximated, whoa, let's see here, I think 2 million, I'm trying to think here, I'm sorry. Yeah, about just over $2 million in construction phase one, two, and three expenditures make up the C-WIP. And then the remaining is two roof projects as well as a chiller project. So, that's what approximates your C-WIP balance at the end of the year. We had some small chicken notes on the side of my, chicken scratches on the side of my notes here, sorry. All right. And then, moving forward, the last item I'll discuss in brief for you here is your long-term obligations. So, you've got all the, the long-term debt obligations that are out there. To cut to the chase, you do have a statutory limit on the amount of general obligation debt, which is fully supported by tax levy. So, statutorily, you do have an equalized limit or equalized value limit of 10% of all equalized value within the district. From a school district standpoint, in the state of Wisconsin, you're virtually never going to bump up to the maximum statutory requirement. You know, I very infrequently see a district that has more than maybe 25 or even upwards of 30% of that total limit ever being used at one time, just because, you know, financially or just by the way the numbers break down, that would just be a tremendous debt level. So, when you're looking at all of the debts that are laid out there, again, the, the debt level is only on those, that GO or that general obligation debt. And of that statutory limit, you're only using about $83.8 million of your total debt limit, which could potentially be 694,000, or 694 million, excuse me. So, you're leaving, you're using up currently just about 12.1% of that debt. From a standpoint of long range, going beyond the scale, the scope of our four-year comparison, the district did peak at 22.3% back in 2017, when I believe that year was about $72 million issuance for the high school and that related work. So, that's the greatest percentage of your debt capacity that you've carried within the last 10 to 15 years is, again, back in 17 of 22.3%. In terms of what's still outstanding out there, just for everybody keeping in mind of just knowing when some certain debt would potentially fall off, for the general obligation bonds, which according to our table here, you've got just about $77.3 million in outstanding GO bonds with the addition, if you look at the 2023 column, that 29 million bond anticipation note was refinanced to a GO bond. So, that's the cause of the jump in 2024. Those bonds, there are essentially three issuances that are outstanding. $2.5 million will fall off by the year fiscal year 2027. $55 million will fall off by 2036. And then the remaining $19.8 million will fall off by 2043. In terms of the general obligation note, there's $6.4 million outstanding, and that is all remaining in one issuance, and that will fully mature by 2027 as well. So, in a nutshell, that's kind of the overall aspects of the district. Again, if there's, I'm happy to take any questions that anybody might have.
Right. Anyone have any questions for our auditor? All right. Good.
Thank you for your questions and advice, by the way.
Well, I'm pleased to report that no one died of boredom from, from your report. And we like boredom because we don't want to be startled at all by any of this news. So, thank you for the positive report. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I won't take that comment personally.
And I did read all 101 pages.
Yes. That's good. Thank you very much. Appreciate the summary. All right. So, academic and career planning, Dave.
Thank you very much. I'm going to invite a team up here, and I'll have them introduce themselves in just a minute. But first, I'll provide a brief overview. So, academic and career planning or ACP is a really important initiative that we've been working on for a while, but I would say that we've revitalized it in the last year. It's really important work, and we have a little tagline there, empowering Hudson students for their future. And I think that says it all. There'll be some details, obviously. But the idea is that we want students, when they come into our system, we want them to learn about themselves. We want to learn academically, and we want them to see a bright future ahead of them. Academic and career planning is a process that allows students to see a bright future and see opportunities. We never want ACP to be perceived as something that funnels kids to a predetermined end. Instead, it broadens their futures and opens doors. You're going to hear a lot about that from the team. I'll have them introduce themselves and provide some detail.
I'm Laura Minarchek. I'm the Assistant Director of Teaching and Learning. And you can go to the next slide. All right. So, here's our definition of academic and career planning, but I'll just talk a little bit about it. It's an exciting opportunity to bridge classroom learning with the possibilities that lie outside of school. It's to help students uncover their strengths, explore their passions, and connect their education to real-world opportunities while also engaging families in a shared sense of purpose and excitement about their child or children's future. Through thoughtful collaboration between schools, families, and the broader community, the process equips students with the tools and confidence to navigate their unique paths. So, as you can see here, academic career planning is a fluid approach across four key phases, which provides clarity and purpose, but also ensures adaptability as students grow and discover new opportunities. Some students know exactly what they want to do outside of high school, while others explore and move between these four phases. Whatever the case might be, academic career planning supports all students as they learn, explore, plan, and grow.
I'm Sarah Engstrom-Wide, the virtual coordinator for Hudson School District. And this visual up here tells you a little bit about why ACP matters. And I think it also really encapsulates the statement about wanting to broaden perspectives and open doors for all students. So, as you can see, we kind of flipped the triangle here for you to demonstrate that in elementary school, we're really providing that universal introduction for all students to see that what they have that they like, what their potential futures could look like. And they do that through opportunities like life skills, lessons with their counselors, and our wonderful opportunities such as junior achievement with community members. Then in middle school, we start to see it widen just a little bit as students are introduced to different pathways and take interest inventories at the middle school. They use things like Arzalo Matchmaker and Complete a Personality Inventory. They also have lessons with their counselors through their exploratories. And then in eighth grade, of course, they get to start selecting some electives to hone in on potential interests that they have. Finally, in high school, we see even further opportunities that are differentiated as students help to build their unique plan with the support of their families and the adults around them. We have so many things, I could probably go on and on for hours about what happens at the high school. I think we have amazing opportunities for our students. And they're able to explore interests both within the core and outside of the core classes. Our eight-period block schedule really does facilitate that. Students are able to take a plethora of various electives. They are also able to do things like get industry-recognized credentials, engage in work-based learning, virtual courses, advanced placement courses, and so on. So, we want our students to feel like they have many choices ahead of them. Maybe they do have that one specific thing, but we want our students to really feel like the sky is the limit, and we've equipped them to explore all those opportunities. I'm sorry. It was a test. I may have failed. So, ACP upgrades in 2024, 25. So, this is just a quick list, which obviously you can all kind of review that quickly. But something that we did was we convened a district-wide ACP team that includes these members as well as several more. We created and established baseline data with a district-created rubric that we
Created exploratory lessons co-taught with counselors at middle school level. Held a really exciting ACP night and family engagement during our conferences, as well as opportunities to explore co-curricular and extracurricular activities with that ACP night. So many wonderful things for our kids going on in the district.
And I'm Jessica Seiler, one of the counselors at the high school. And if you want to go to the next slide. So for us, the importance of making sure that we are a partnership with our families, I think this just really embodies our uniqueness to our community. And we know that it takes a village to make sure our students and our families are well taken care of. So we have lots of opportunities for our local businesses and real-world experiences through some volunteer opportunities with Test Drive and Junior Achievement, BizTown. We know that not everything that goes in backpacks comes home. So a lot of opportunities for those things that, again, we get to talk with students about, but not always do we get to see the faces of our families. So making sure that we have those night events that we can really get out and, again, communicate with everyone at the table so that we're all in the know. And then we know that time is really of the essence. So we want to make sure that our families can kind of do things together. So we've tried to make sure that our conference nights, we have extra breakouts so that you're already in the building, so we're not have the extra opportunity to learn more about what are the great things that we have at our schools and with our kids. And then next. So Zello, this is definitely one of my passion projects that we've been really working hard with. And this is what we use with students who are in grades six through 12. And again, the opportunity, as you can kind of see the little graphic, they have lots of opportunities where they start to think about different careers. So they do a matchmaker. They get to learn about their personality. They get to learn about just what makes me a good student? Maybe what do I need to focus on a little bit more? It gives the opportunity for them to really kind of make that portfolio for themselves so that they can, again, hopefully take that into the real world. And again, make sure that they're learning what's out there for their educational opportunities after high school, because we know everyone has a different path. And they might not know it from ninth grade, and maybe they're still learning it even as they're leaving our doors, but they know that there's lots of opportunities.
All right. So some, my name is Nicole Bright. I'm one of the Assistant Principals at the middle school. So some of our next steps, Leslie Bliscotchik is the leader of our ACP team. She was not able to be here tonight because she is at the Western Wisconsin College and Career Fair that's being held right now at River Falls High School. So she is the Hudson School District Representative for the regional ACP team. This team gets together and collaborates and brings events like tonight's events for any students in Western Wisconsin. Tonight's event included over 20 Western Wisconsin businesses and 70 different representatives from universities, technical colleges, and the military. So it was a great event for students and families who were able to attend. We are also working on increasing the number of industry-recognized credentials that we offer. I'm going to skip down to the bottom as well. The welding academy would be one example. That is an example of how our high school is able to partner with the Wisconsin Technical Schools to bring a welding academy to the high school and be able to provide welding certifications to students who are interested. Along with that, several students receive certificates in Certified Nursing Assistant, OSHA 10, Automotive Service Excellence, and continuing to grow those, especially looking in the medical field and in childcare. Also continuing to integrate both curriculum and extracurricular activities. As there, we've already talked about bringing our co-curricular and extracurricular student members, advisors, coaches, to be at ACP night, at conference nights, to be able to really promote their clubs, their sports, their activities, and to be able to give students other opportunities outside of the classroom to explore different areas they might be interested in. Continuing with professional development for our educators. Working with our Character Education Council on the character traits that we feel reflect the values of our community, but that we also consider to be employability skills are kind of some of the next steps that we're looking at as an ACP team. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions, board members? Molly is just in the mic.
Yep, Mr. President. Of course I do. I love this so much. I have kids, 22-year-olds, one a senior in college and one a, not in college, but working. And I just think being intentional about as we move forward, we're trying to create good citizens and people who are employable and no matter what they do, that they're good. You know, you have to be a good communicator if you're a stay-at-home parent. But I just think it's so great how we are really working towards that very directly, intentionally, and then including parents in that too, because so much of the time things happen with kids and you're like, what? Like the missing out on stuff, you don't always realize. And sometimes, you know, having the parent as the partner to maybe be the extra push, I think is great. I just am so impressed with what you guys are doing. And I mean, the kids, we've seen so much with Leslie Bliscotchik about what's happening there, and that's because of you guys and your professional, professional educators and staff at our schools. So good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Megan.
Mr. President, this is great. Thank you so much for coming. I love to see that you've established baseline data and you have these rubrics. And you mentioned that you have annual and long-term goals related to this work. Not that I expect you to list them all, but could you share anything about some of those goals?
Just that we're always improving. So we're always looking to add additional events, always looking to partner with bringing in more to our classrooms and making sure that, again, we're addressing all the needs within our community because we want students to know, like, if I'm going into the medical field, that's not just a doctor, but who else is out there? And so I think it's just really important for students to see from the ground up how to get there.
And then we created, when we talk about the rubrics we created, we created two different rubrics. One was a student experience rubric that's really measuring how do students perceive the work we're doing and how can we improve? So we set goals based on that data as we collect it. And then there's an implementation rubric, which is more the adult saying, how well are we doing what we set out to do? So most of our goals will come from that, but as Jess just said, they're, they're all through the system. We're going to, the next report actually is about school report cards, and there's some data we get from school report cards that measures how our students are engaged in some of these things that go beyond just the test scores, and we'll use that as well to establish those goals.
Any other comments or questions for board members? Otherwise, thank you for your report. Appreciate the progress that you're making. Thank you. All right. Next up, another Dave agenda item, state report cards.
Yep. Thank you very much. And as we're transitioning, the, the leaders that just spoke are doing amazing work with our work around ACP. It is a larger team, as one of the team members mentioned, but that was a very diverse group in terms of their roles and responsibilities. And that was intentional because ACP really does touch every aspect of what we do, especially grade six through 12. So very much appreciate all their work. And as you mentioned, we'll be discussing report cards now. And we went into some depth a few months ago at a work session report card. So this is more of an overview of the state report cards, where we are and what we're learning from the data as we collect it. So first of all, the what, the why, and the how of state report cards. Report cards are not new data for us. They're a synthesis of data that we collect earlier. So by the time we receive report cards, we've already received all the individual data, but it's very helpful in that it aggregates it in a way that's meaningful and allows us to compare across the other schools. They've been in place since 2015. I will say they've never been the same for more than two years. So they change a lot, which is slightly problematic because we talk about comparing. It's hard to compare over time. We can compare across different schools, across different districts throughout the state, but it is a little bit challenging to compare over time because of the changes that are in place. This year was no different. But that comparison is the greatest value. And then one of, as I mentioned, we already have the data by the time we get our report card. So sometimes that data reaffirms our path. It's like, yep, that's what we thought we would see. This is another view, maybe a little bit of a different perspective that helps us see things differently and can help us refine our path most directly when we look at the percentile ranking across the state. It's not until we get the report cards that we're able to do that analysis. So that certainly is helpful when we get into the report cards. The next slide, this is just a snippet of the first page of the district report card, and it is complex. So I like to go through each one of these areas so you understand exactly what we're looking at. For the most part, the data on the report card is gathered from our, our high-stakes accountability assessments. At the elementary level, forward, the middle school level, forward, at the high school, primarily pre-ACT and ACT. Forward crosses over a little bit in the other areas too, but primarily from those. And then we have an overall score, upper left-hand corner. Upper right-hand corner, you see the priority area weights, which says how will our district add weight or allow the weight to be applied to each one of the different areas we'll discuss? Then we have our priority areas. The first two, I would argue, are most important, achievement and growth. We'll get into why they're most important. The others are certainly good measures, but they're the same data looked at differently. Achievement measures the overall performance and proficiency of our students. All of these are over three years, with the most recent year having the greatest weight. Growth measures the student performance from one year to the next. They're both very important. We'll get into why they're important as we go through the next slides. Just so you know, all of the report cards are linked there on that slide. So community members, you can have access to all the report cards there as well. Now some highlights. This was the first year that all of our elementaries hit the significantly exceeding expectations mark, which was great, a great feat for them, really hard work to get to that point. Our achievement percentile at every school was between the 81st and 99th percentile. So all really strong achievements, certainly a range there, but strong achievement. We had proficiency gains at all three levels in both ELA and math from year to year, which is fantastic. The district is at the 90th percentile in ELA achievement across the state and at the 89th percentile in math achievement across the state. So certainly some wonderful highlights. Now we'll look at focus areas. Again, none of these focus areas were brand-new when we got the report card because they were illuminating data that we had already seen, but certainly it allowed us to look a little bit different. And it did refine maybe ranking those priority areas changed a little bit based on that report card data. So one is growth at the middle school level. We'll be focusing on that, continuing to make sure that students are making more than typical growth from one year to the next in both ELA and math. Then we use this data to find team and classroom-level gaps. So where do we see a certain, a certain area excelling and how can we replicate that? And the report card data helps us do that. Subgroup gaps as well. What students do we have that are in certain subgroups that may be performing at very high levels or may be lagging a bit where we need to support differently? The report card helps us identify that, and we've got some that are certainly part of our goal. And then this last one requires a little bit of explanation. Continued focus on implementing programs as intended. What that means is we want to make sure that from the teaching and learning and the student service perspective, we're developing programs to be implemented, and they need to be implemented as intended. And if we do that really well, we actually open up opportunities for teachers to exercise the art of teaching, where they can personalize their instruction while delivering the programs as intended. When we do that, we've seen our greatest gains. We often talk about elementary math, highlighting that. That was the first program that we implemented really, really well and saw amazing results. And we're learning from that and more recent examples of implementing programs exactly how they should be implemented. In terms of next steps, here I mentioned I was going to talk a little bit about proficiency. Proficiency is our number-one measure. It's our number-one goal as a school. We need students to be academically solid. So all those things we talked about in ACP are available to them. It's our primary job. But we know that proficiency is a, it's tough to action-plan around proficiency. It's tough to action-plan around 90% of your students are proficient in X, Y, or Z. Growth is incredibly important because what that says is student A performed here in this year and here in this year. That may be great growth, maybe not, but that's where we action-plan, both from the student level, classroom level, and the school level. But if you stack growth over year, over year, over year, that's how you see the proficiency gains. They're inextricably linked, but they're both important for different reasons. So having said that, what are our next steps and program improvements? So one thing is we want to maintain the amazing focus that the middle school math team has done. They've done amazing work last year in their first year of implementation, saw really strong results. We need to maintain that focus, support them so they can continue to do the good work that they're doing. We recently saw some interim data, very, very promising. We're proud of that team, certainly. And then we're going to, we're currently implementing the new grades three through five resource. That was the CKLA. We presented on that earlier. We'll be implementing that at grades K2. Elementary literacy is a beast. It's a massive implementation. It requires a lot of focus to make sure we do implement that exactly as intended. And then we're in the first year of our new ELA resource in grades six through 11. Met with the high school English team just, just last week, and they're doing outstanding work too. They're very excited about this work. You know you're on the right track when teachers say two things. This is really working and it's really hard. We need to support our teachers. It's tough work. When you implement these big programs, it's tough work, but they're energized by their student response, which is great to see. And a big, a big initiative is personalized reading plans at the elementary. Personalized reading plans are part of Act 20, but we actually had launched them a slightly different iteration, but the same concept. That is an entire team of professionals looking at any student that needs additional support in the area of reading and having very prescriptive and personalized reading plans. There's a lot of work that goes around this. A few of the folks that were recognized in Cheers for Peers are doing a lot of the work to make this happen. It's very important, and we're seeing great results already. And with that, what questions do you have?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Dave, could you talk a little bit about what proficient means on the DPI report card and testing versus what a layperson might think proficient means for reading your math?
Sure. Yep, absolutely. Yeah. And, and that was one of the areas when I mentioned changes. That was the big change this year, that proficiency in forward changed significantly, not for ACT or pre-ACT. So proficiency from, from a layperson view means that we would assume that to mean, like, in the area of reading. A proficient reader can read at grade level, successfully read. You're in third grade, you can read a book and make meaning from that. The proficiency from the state level or from an academic standpoint is a test score. And that test score is decided by a group of humans that get together and say, this is what it means to be proficient. Wisconsin had a very high bar. They lowered that bar. So we saw numbers go up, but that change in data, it, I think for high-performing districts, it actually created a comparison that was less favorable over time. But, so it is, like I said, a test score. Having said that, the work we're doing specifically at the elementary level, but that's going to work its way through the system, we're already seeing students' level of proficiency climb. We're seeing more and more students meet that bar. So I would argue, I was a little disappointed when the bar was lowered at the state level. It would have been better for us to see a consistent measure because then we can plan around that and see progress. But that's not the only measure. We use to say, yes, a student is reading where we want to see them reading or performing math, where we want to see them performing math.
Okay.
So I, kind of along the same line, but, so our overall score is 72.9, which is exceeds expectation. And I think in all of our worlds, 100% is exceeding expectation. So what does the scale look like for exceeds versus lowered?
Yep. And I can, I don't want to guess because they're, they're very specific cut scores, but I can get that and I'll get that to you before the end of the meeting. But yep, that's a really good question. Without answering it numerically, if you look at that priority area weighting scale to the right, what that tells us is achievement overall is about 39% of our score and growth is about 11% of our overall score. That 72.9 takes all four of those areas into consideration. So But yep, that's a really good question. And without answering it numerically. If you look at that priority area weighting scale to the right, what that tells us is achievement overall is about 39% of our score. And growth is about 11% of our overall score. That 72.9 takes all four of those areas into consideration. So when we look at that overall score. Um, we certainly would want to see us at the significantly exceeding expectations. That would be fantastic. Our focus has to be on achievement because that is net, well, for two reasons. One, because it is what's most important for us, but two, it's going to have the biggest bang for the buck on that overall score. So if you click on the link in the, um, all school report cards, you'll see some of the kind of range of scores that exist. And those scores that raise that overall 72.9 and those scores that held us back a little bit. But I can get the specific numbers for you.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, uh, Dave, I noticed, uh, it's another agenda item that we'll have a little bit later. We're talking about what our board's position may be on resolutions that Wasby is proposing. And
You're going to have me weigh in on that or no?
Yeah. Well, it's, uh, resolution number nine or 25.08 talks about changing the report card so that it's on achievement only. What would be, um, the impact on how Hudson stacks up with the rest of the state if we did that?
Yeah. So if we would do that, we would know those percentiles would likely be where we'd see. So we'd be at about the 90th percentile in the state if we're looking only at achievement. And actually, um, we'd see the way this is recorded slightly higher because of the three year rolling average. The, um, the reason I'm in favor of that idea is it's very consistent. Certainly these other measures are important. Um, I mentioned, well, we're, I'll use one as an example. I didn't get into it much, but on track for graduation. So then we take in on that measure, we take in a couple of other metrics which include attendance measures. But then we're looking at third grade ELA and eighth grade math, which are already measured in these others. And it's not good data science to start taking individual data points and double counting them in multiple areas. So it just convolutes it. So for that reason alone, the idea of just saying, you know what? We're a school district. We're about student learning and achievement. Let's have that be the primary measure. I'd be supportive of that.
All right. I appreciate your input on that. Is there any other questions or comments by board members? Otherwise, thanks for the explanation, Dave, and your work on that. And, you know, I know we've set goals around, you know, obviously trying to improve proficiency and, um, even raise our percentile even higher. So thank you for your work in that area. So now Nick, you have the next three reports and your challenge is to beat the time that it took to do the first three reports. So I think you can follow through, uh, construction.
I think I can. I think I can beat those. Um, all right. So construction update. The first one up on the list is market and Johnson. I'm not going to go through and read all these different things to you. Uh, just go down to kind of the project photos and describe what's going on. Uh, they started the process of thawing out the, uh, the dirt floor in the gym so they can get that thawed out. So we can get the floor poured. Um, and so in the process of doing that, you can also see in the next picture. Spray foam insulation going on the outside of the gym box as they work their way around and continue to, uh, get that done. You start to see the renovations, uh, that are happening inside of the building. Um, and I'll be sending an email out to board members to see if we want to set up a tour to kind of give an update of when they want to kind of see what's going on. Um, and, uh, there's just a lot of different stuff that's going on. We've turned over five classrooms. Uh, that have finished, not a hundred percent finished. They still have to go back in and fix a few things and, and finish up a few items. But, uh, they're onto the next phase as we're, as we're moving through that. Uh, if you go to the next, uh, the next school, which is EP Rock, um, you can start to see, uh, the first picture on EP Rock. Start to see where some of the borrowed lights are cut into, uh, the walls will be taking light from the classrooms, transferring into the hallways. Uh, you can start to see these, uh, space that you're looking at there is the old locker rooms from a long, long time ago. Um, they have been, uh, the walls have been pulled out, the showers were pulled out. Um, and they've been turned into classroom spaces. They'll look a lot different in about two days as they get drywall. This was an interesting find. So, um, all of the basically the chalkboards at EP Rock, cause they were chalkboards before they were whiteboards. Were all buried in the actual plaster, uh, in the rooms. And so when they thought they were just going to be able to take the chalkboards down, it left, uh, about a half inch, three quarters of an inch hole. Uh, in the plaster and left. So, uh, you can see where they've kind of had to fill that in, uh, with drywalls. They've moved through that. Um, you've started to see, keep going down on the, uh, next picture on the left, that kind of orange looking stuff. That was where somebody thought it was a good idea to carpet the walls. And so, uh, that's all been removed and that'll actually get covered with, uh, it'll get laminated drywall over top of it. Because, uh, when you glue really thick, heavy carpet to walls, it starts to kind of really make a situation that makes them almost, uh, unsalvageable. You start to see as you go down, some of the new duct work going in centralized, uh, heating and cooling systems. And then, uh, towards the bottom there, you start to see where the hallways, uh, have been, uh, the block has been epoxied, uh, to brighten the hallways up. So instead of having that kind of that brownish, dark grayish, um, block, uh, they've been epoxied and, and they're starting to look good. Uh, as you work through, you can start to see some of the pictures with the electrical being upgraded. Uh, bathrooms, um, they're going through and starting to, uh, pull, uh, pull bathroom stalls and remodel some of those things. All of the bathrooms are being updated to ADA compliance, uh, in the buildings. And so that would be, uh, a good situation, uh, as we move forward. In the last building, uh, the middle school, um, which just started out that long ago, first picture you'll see, we started cutting the borrowed lights into the common spaces. So it starts to match some of the additions that we put on, uh, above there. You can see that'll all get painted, uh, but they had to put in some lintels. And fill the block back in as they, as they cut the windows and things along those lines in. This next picture is actually inside the bathrooms. They started to get ceiling grid in. They're getting ready to get, uh, paint done and, and, or I'm sorry, tile on the walls. And getting, uh, some of those different components. Uh, again, you can just see utilities that are being upgraded. Classroom ceilings, get new lights, new ceiling pads. The grid is in great shape. There was no reason to pull all the grid down. Uh, and take on that expense. Uh, so gets new ceiling tiles. So clean them up, uh, and brighten things up. The next, uh, as you keep going down, you'll start to see some of the soffinings that's added into the house areas. It's already been painted, starts to mirror what you're going to see on the floors and lockers and things like that to kind of update the spaces as they're moving forward. They've started putting, if you keep going down, they started putting the ceiling grid in to get those things, uh, moving through. Um, just again, some more shots of kind of that house space. And you start to see how the classrooms are kind of open to the house space now where they'll be able to provide passive supervision. Kids can go, we'll be able to be out in the house spaces, maybe working on in small groups on different things. While teachers can still see what's going on out there, uh, and the locker setup will be, uh, quite a bit different. Um, just again, more, more shots of the same as you go through. Um, currently working with market and Johnson on a variety of things. For the most part, things have been rolling along pretty well. You know, our, our, at the middle school, a lot of what's happening is HVAC upgrades and then some, uh, finishes upgrades out in the house areas and things along those lines. Uh, so pretty straightforward stuff. EP Rock and North Hudson are a little bit more challenging as, uh, we had a condition at EP Rock. In one of the main hallways, when they took the ceiling down, the ceiling tile down, they found the exterior overhang, canopy overhang from the building. That one of the original parts of the building that was built. So it was about, uh, it was a built up roof, about eight inches thick of tar, gravel and, and different things. And it took them, uh, uh, the better part of, uh, about two or three days just to tear that out that they didn't know was there. Um, but it had to come out, otherwise you couldn't get any duct through, duct work through that space. Uh, it's amazing, you know, when you start taking down ceiling tiles and things like that, what's kind of up inside some of those spaces. Um, but I think, uh, as people said, the, the new windows are going to be going in, I think next week, uh, the ribbon windows. Um, and working through some of that stuff, but, uh, just excited to continue to move forward. Staff has been very, very, very flexible and accommodating. Um, as we work through it, we've had to move, uh, some, some different, uh, uh, move in dates. We had to move within a couple of days of when we were originally planning, but for the most part, things are, things are motoring along. So, yeah. Any questions about construction? Go ahead, Rob.
Yes.
Rob, so just a question with regards to the contingency and Bonnie, thanks for sharing.
Yep.
Um, you know, we have, the project has 1.26 million in contingency. And, uh, you know, ordinarily with a guaranteed maximum price project, the contingency would belong to market and Johnson. But what they did during the, their interview is they said whatever's left belongs to the district, which is absolutely fantastic.
Yep.
And so just from a, a tracking standpoint, is there a way for us to just maybe monthly get a list of here are the change orders? Here's the 1.26 and here are the deducts.
Yep.
Cause it'd be, you know, if we're, we as a board are looking out for, you know, the taxpayer and stuff and just for our own edification.
Yep. Yeah, yeah, we can, we put it together because Bonnie's tracking it very closely, uh, because they have to go through a change order, uh, request process. And then a former formal change order process at the end of the month where they wrap them all together. Uh, so they can't just utilize that the contingency as they see fit. It actually needs, uh, approval from the district.
That's awesome.
And the same thing is there's certain allowances that we had built into the project, same type of thing. It's being handled the same way contingency would be handled at need. In order to utilize the allowance, uh, requires basically a change order request to be approved by the district. So, uh, yeah, we can absolutely do that. Um, we kind of started off with the slow start, you know, the, the two, um, two out of the three buildings just started last month. So everything's kind of in the rear. So we should be able to have some more reports for you on that. Uh, and North Hudson, um, out of the gate didn't have a whole lot, but yeah, we can start putting that together and putting it into a, a report for you, uh, for your work sessions. So you can go through that. Absolutely.
Yes, Bob.
And Nick, can you speak just briefly? Are you still on or are you on schedule pretty much or anything? My mic's on. But also I've heard from people.
Your, your mic is on, but not plugged into anything. So.
You know, Tim would rather have me not speak and that's just his way of enforcing his, uh, so. So if you could just speak very quickly about, um, I've heard some talk in the community about the district office, this building here.
Yeah.
When will that construction start on the, just because I know we've talked about it, but this for the public's notice.
Yep, absolutely. So, uh, district office, uh, pieces at the middle school doesn't start until the summer. Uh, because using that space as swing space as we move, as we work on the different other areas of the middle school. Um, and, you know, anticipating that this building will be sold sometime in the next six to nine months. Uh, and then when this building is sold, then we'd move into, you know, move into the new space over there. We're still on track, you know, timeline wise, uh, with market and Johnson of the projects finishing on time right now. And we're feeling, knocking wood, feeling pretty good about the budgets, you know, our goal is to bring them in, uh, on or definitely under budget. If we can, definitely on budget, but we think, you know, we're hoping that we can bring them in under budget as well. So that's our, that's our goal.
So just you mentioned six to nine months, but the, the projected time when we want these finished is before school starts in the fall, right?
Yep, yep, absolutely. And when I was saying, uh, you know, six to nine, that was more district office related. But yeah, all the other ones, I think they have a, a move in date somewhere around the middle of August is when they're, they're supposed to be ready to be done. There's different phases that are turned over at different times. So the, the middle school picture that you're looking at right now. Um, that picture was taken last week. That space is going to be turned over to us in two and a half weeks. Uh, it moves very quickly when you start getting to finishes and things along those lines.
So I look forward to getting that tour so we can see the progress. I happen to be in North Hudson recently. And it's amazing how tall those walls are on that new gym.
Absolutely.
It creates a new, new landscape in that neighborhood. So.
Yep.
All right. Uh, next up for your reports is update on strategic.
Absolutely. So there's not a handout for this one, but I know we had a request for updating strategic planning. Uh, we've been working with CISO as a planning partner on our strategic planning. And, uh, as we get ready to create our next, uh, five year strategic plan. Um, the kind of that first, uh, piece of that was our community conversation that we did last April. And so what we're working with CISO on and our administrative teams are working on is how do we operationalize? What the community said they wanted to see out of their schools. And so, um, and I know, uh, our consultant that we've been working with. I think interviewed each of the board members individually or had a scheduled call individually to make sure that she's capturing what the board's direction in as well. And so we're trying to, we're trying to balance, you know, community direction, uh, board direction. And, you know, administrative feedback or leadership team feedback as we go to put those things together. Our update is we've had two, um, let's see, October, November, we've, sorry, we've had three, uh, sessions. As we get ready, our goal is to have something for the board, uh, potentially at a work session in March. Uh, we have scheduled with the, uh, scheduled an invite for our community conversation. Folks that came to our community conversation last April, uh, an evening, just, uh, you know, not a, not what we did last time, 12 hours over three evenings. But, uh, an hour or two to be able to go over, here's kind of a draft of where we're at with the strategic plan, based on the feedback they gave us. And based on what we think we can operationalize. Uh, so that is on the calendar. I believe it's April 5th, 4th?
Is it 4th? Yeah. I don't know.
I'm trying to go.
Well, I know April 1st is a Tuesday. So.
Yes. So, so it's, it might be April 7th. Okay. April 7th, um, and we would invite anybody from the public to attend, but we will be sending out, um, hard copy invitations specifically to remind the folks that were part of our community conversation. So we wanted to let them know that, you know, the conversation, the feedback they gave us didn't just go into a couple of reports and then said, well, we're actually taking that to really implement. How we move forward as a district. So questions. Go ahead, Rob.
Mr. President?
Yes, Rob.
So the thing that I really enjoyed about the Studer work is just all the community engagement, teachers, students. Community, I mean, there's a lot of it that went into what are those things that you want to see in your school district? And then they boiled it down to common themes and ultimately that worked its way out to the pillars or goals we have. And so what, what does that community engagement look like that'll help us create those common themes again? Are we engaging students? Are we engaging teachers? I mean, it sounds like we have this event on the 7th.
So, so the, the thought process was instead of doing the smaller focus groups like we did last time. That we are going to take the feedback that we got from the larger community conversation and the different themes that came from that. To help drive that, drive that conversation versus doing the smaller focus groups, um, as we, as we move forward. So that's the, that is the piece, that's kind of that staff, student and community input piece is coming from that community conversation.
I mean, the only thing that I would ask is maybe to reconsider a few small groups, especially with students.
Okay.
And the, and the sole purpose is a lot of times we have people in the community, they, they come to these large events. But it, it never fails, the people with the biggest voices are the ones that are heard. And the people that are, aren't as heard, they're maybe a little more meek or maybe they're younger. They don't tend to participate, but their voices are equally as important.
Okay.
Um, and in smaller groups, they tend to feel more comfortable in participating. So again, I mean, do what you will. Um, I'm just hoping that it's reflective of as many corners of the community as possible.
Absolutely. So that's good feedback.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on that?
Thank you, by the way.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Definitely a process that, uh, is not something that's just decided overnight either. And, um, all right, next up, school board election, April 1st.
Absolutely. So we have running for the board, Kate Garsette. No, I'm just kidding. That's her, that's it. No, her name is, her name is at the top there. That's just that she's the clerk and she is certifying everything. Um, so if there is any election issues whatsoever. Call Kate, I think is, that's kind of how it works. No. Um, it's, uh, we, we did do, we, the, uh, we have six, uh, six people running for the three seats. So we do not have a primary. So the election will be on the first of April, as Jamie said. Uh, there was a ballot draw that was conducted on the 8th. Is that right, Tim? Last week? There wasn't a spot to just put last week, but yeah. I'm just going based on when Kate signed off on it. So, uh, the ballot, uh, order and the names as they'll, uh, appear on the ballot, you can see the order. Uh, we have Maria Rudy, uh, Addison, uh, Filiotro, uh, Joe Rivera, Aaron Gerlock, Lynn Robson and Brian Dahl. Are the six candidates. That's the order in which they will appear on the ballot as well. So, uh, there is a primary in, in February, just not for school board races. And so, um, so that is something that, uh, um, if there would have been another candidate that would have ran, if there would have been seven. That would have forced a primary, but because you can have up to two candidates for every open seat. That's why six, uh, uh, keeps us from having a, um, primary. So questions? Just want to remind people, April 1st, get out and vote.
All right. Thank you for those that are running and good luck. All right. Next up, uh, seventh and final report, the staff family fun night and wellness challenge. Andrea.
Yes. So this is our fourth annual staff family fun night. It's a great opportunity for our staff and their family members to come in and enjoy our high school facilities. and enjoy our high school facilities and it's put on, um, by Hudson lead. Um, members all support it and I encourage you guys as well. I hope you got your invitations. Um, to, or your flyer here to come as well. Um, we usually have a large turnout for this fun event and, um, we're doing a few different things this year. We're hoping to have like a beanbag tournament. Um, but for the most part, um, it's the same as prior years. And again, it's something that our staff typically look forward to that in conjunction with our wellness challenge. Um, we'll be sending out more information on that at the end of January. Um, we're trying to, uh, shake it up a little bit. We focused last year on body, mind, spirit. Support initiatives. And so we're probably going to do the same, but we're trying to, we always are open to feedback and ideas. So we gather that from staff at the beginning of this process and then we kick it off and try to get a big turnout, um, of participation going into spring break because then it's spring, right? It's really a way to get through the winter months and have some fun at the same time.
All right. And, um, I thought I saw an email. You're looking for volunteers from the school board?
Love it. Yes. If we could have some, I think the staff think it's really cool if board members are present at these type of events.
No, no dunk tank. Last year, last year, I assisted with, uh, rollerblading, thinking that, uh, with, uh, the school nurse and I'd see some, you know, herniation helping somebody that got injured roller skating. But, uh, that didn't happen. So I'm going with beanbag.
Beanbag. There you go. Yeah. We're hoping we could have some family competition.
Organizing a family reunion beanbag tournament. So I think, yeah.
Ooh, dunk tank. If I could get approval for that, right? That'd be fun.
I think there's liability issues.
Yeah, probably so. Roller skates are bad enough, I think.
And before you, before you move off the reports, gave you, gave you the wrong date on the community, uh, uh, conversation follow-up. It's April 10th. April 10th. So I want to make sure that you have the date right. If you come April 7th, we'd love to see you, but nobody's going to be here. So April 10th is the, is the date of that follow-up. Thanks.
Good to know. All right. Now we go to topics for discussion, possible action. I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda items and expenditures pursuant to the language.
Mr. President?
Yes, Rob.
I move approval of the consent items and that the chief financial and operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $3,478,152. And I believe that says 69 cents.
Yes. I, I don't have my cheaters with me either. So all right.
And I don't either.
Yeah. All right. So you got, you, you read correctly there, but, uh, is there a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion of second. Uh, does not allow discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Uh, it's unanimous and, um, I think that we have a few more retirements. Is that right?
We do. With the timing of the December meeting as well as our deadline of December 15th, we have several more for this month to discuss and to celebrate. First up is Stephanie Chuckle. She's a speech, speech and language pathologist currently at Willow River and has had 28 years of service in the Hudson School District. And we have Catherine Schulte. She's a 4K teacher. Before that she was also a kindergarten teacher. She's currently at Willow River, 20 years of service in the district. Sonia Baumgartner is a special ed para, uh, at the high school with 21 years of service as in that role. Charmaine Lindberg, uh, who we just celebrated with Cheers for Peers, uh, she's a language arts teacher at the middle school, 18 years of service. We have Lisa Persinger, who is a kindergarten teacher at Holton, 27 years of service in the district. Um, a lot of big years of service here. And Kristin Ziebel, a school counselor at Holton, 29 years of service in the district. And then Ron Mork, who's a part-time custodian at the high school, has 12 years of service in the district. So we'll be celebrating them at the upcoming recognition banquet.
Do we have a date on that yet?
Yes, we do. Um, it's, I believe it's May 7th, but I'm checking as we speak because.
I think last time we talked about it, they said it was going to be sometime in May and.
It's yes, Wednesday, May 7th.
All right. All right. Well, uh, thank you, uh, for, um, all your service, those that, uh, will be retiring and, um, thank you also for timely announcing retirement because it really helps, doesn't it, uh, to help your planning? So. Um, all right. Next up on action items, the 2026 Spanish trip. Back to Dave on that one.
Yeah, thank you very much. So, um, Alicia Benke, the primary planner for this trip came in last month and presented a nice job providing a a thorough overview of the proposed trip to Spain in June of 2026. It's planned to be a 10 day trip. Um, from depart day one and then several places to see and experiences to enjoy as they enhance their language experience. Cost between $4,300, $4,099 with, um, the cancel anytime insurance option for $55 to $150 per student. A great trip. It's a well-planned trip. I know we were questioning if we're going to allow Scott to go, go, don't know if we waited on that yet, Scott. Not sure, but, um, a great opportunity. And like I said, you had a thorough presentation. So bringing it back here for formal action and approval.
Yes, Kate. I think just particularly right now, it's important to say that this is not a, um, cost to our district. This is per student. And they fundraise or families pay for it.
Yes, that, yep, yep. Absolutely. Thank you for that, Kate.
Thanks Kate for clarifying that. And, and Dave, I mean, this is, uh, we're following, uh, board policy in getting the board to approve these, um, overnight trips.
Yes, yep. To approve them and to do them well in advance, obviously, because this is for June of 2026.
Right. And of course we also monitor these because when we're approving them, there's certainly, uh, current world events and conditions, but that if those were to change, um, there was some type of warning or restriction on travel, obviously that would be reconsidered.
Yes, absolutely. And that is the reason that we, um, offer the cancel anytime insurance. So if that does happen, our families aren't out because it is, it's a significant investment.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. Lynn.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2026 Spanish trip.
Second. All right. We have a motion of second. Is there any further questions, comments or discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. All right. Next up, we have the 2025 Wasbe Delegate Assembly Resolutions. Thanks for getting those out, Nick. And that was, uh, again, I don't have the benefit of the last two years, having been on that statewide committee, uh, had a little more insight what was being considered. I just noticed the numbers are not that daunting. There's been years where there's been a couple dozen of these resolutions. This year it's what 13, 12, 13, um, a little bit more manageable. One of the reasons for that is once a resolution is passed, it becomes part of the Wasbe booklet and they've got positions in there that have uh, been in there for a couple of decades. Doesn't necessarily mean the legislature acts on those things, but, uh, as we can see and we go through, um, or as we went through this, I, I'm not expecting we're going to go read all these word for word here tonight, but if, uh, we hit, um, you know, if there's a reason why we're not supporting something, just give some rationale. But again, a good share of these are just amending old resolutions that require doing so over timing. All right.
Yep. So, um, yeah, a couple of them that we are just kind of neutral. I don't think there's any that we're going to say opposed to.
Microphone.
Uh, sorry. You there? All right, perfect. And it's actually plugged in. See how that works, Bob? So, um, there's only two that we are neutral on. The rest are pretty supportive of. Uh, the one is 2504 decoupling public education and private school voucher funding. And there are pros and cons to this. Um, you know, obviously one of the pros is it gets pulled out of the school appropriation. One of the things that's kind of a little bit of a misnomer out there is when money gets spent on private vouchers, it's getting lumped into money getting spent on public education. That's not totally accurate. The, so if it's pulled out, it's much easier to track how much, uh, the state is actually spending on private school vouchers and, uh, which I think is a pro. The con is right now when they pull it out, um, what they force us to do is backfill it with property tax. Now that's a con, obviously for our taxpayers. However, uh, we are able to at least get the revenues back. And you know, when they, when they pull us in, it's just not the revenues come from states, revenues coming from a local level. So I mean, I think there are, there are positives and negatives about it, but they're, you know, so it's kind of somewhat neutral. I don't, I don't think it's real overly beneficial either way, because then the other thing is it becomes, if it becomes just a regular state appropriation outside of education, then it's going to be, it competes for dollars like we compete for dollars and everything else. Uh, and it could lead to lower appropriations for, uh, public K-12s. Um, the other one that, uh, neutral on is funding for school meal debt. This, this is a, this is one of those things where, uh, it's to create a, you know, have the state reimburse for large amounts of debt that are unpaid, school, school meals that are unpaid. There's already a mechanism in place, uh, for people that can't afford school lunch, you know, both free reduced lunch. Personally, never been a big proponent on, you know, providing lunch for everybody, you know, it's, it's because we currently have a system that allows people that can't afford it, uh, to get reimbursed, uh, or to have their meals paid for. Um, when you start reimbursing for everybody, there, there's a finite amount of money available for public education. And, um, we'd prefer to have that in, uh, more flexible, spendable, uh, funds that we can utilize for kids and things along those lines. Um, not that there's not pros, uh, to it, uh, there are, but the pie is only so big. And so if a piece of the pie is going to pay for people's lunches that don't need their kids' lunches paid for, that means there's less money to pay for things, reading instruction or things along those lines. And so, um, not necessarily opposed, but just trying to be neutral, I guess.
On, on this last one that you mentioned, um, I'm just surprised that it made it through because uh, on that committee last year, it was phrased differently. Basically it was free lunch for all in the entire state. And, um, that, that drew a lot of, uh, discussion. I remember one person even leaving the room. He got so, uh, revved up about it. So, um, that one didn't make it, um, you know, to the statewide consideration, but I guess right now would be discussion. Do we want to change our positions on any of these? Um, it's support for, uh, all but two, and, and the other two would be just those neutral.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So Nick, given your rationale for 2511, why, why would we be neutral on it? Why would, why wouldn't we oppose it?
Well, I mean, part of it is it's not a full free meals for all. What it is, is to establish some type of fund. So the districts that have some of these account balances that haven't, that have grown, uh, they can apply for, uh, some relief from those fund balances. Um, that, when I say fund balances, that's individual, not to get confused with what the auditor was talking about earlier, but you know, we will have people that will rack up a lot of debt sometimes with meals. Um, we're not going to tell a child they can't eat. We're not going to have them put their meal back or anything like that. And so, um, what, what, what ends up happening? So it's, it's, it's kind of a, a balancer. So it's not quite the same thing as giving everybody free meals, but it does create some type of fund to allow districts to try to get reimbursements on some of these larger dollar items. I don't know, Bonnie, if you have an idea about what are unfunded or unpaid lunch balances were for 23, 24, you have any idea about?
I think last year was about $12,000. I mean, overall, I mean, it was about $30,000.
Does the Angel Fund cover that then?
Um, we did get a very nice donation from Rotary this year that was for. Sorry. Um, we did get a nice, um, donation from Rotary this year that offset, um, about half of that. So, um, yeah. It doesn't cover all of it.
And we try to, you know, in food service and, and administrators, try to work with families, start to see that accumulate. Try to get them to fill out the paperwork for, uh, free or reduced lunch. Uh, as it works, some families won't, uh, create some challenges for us. Or some folks that are on it, uh, then get additional items or à la carte items that aren't covered under free or reduced and you know, it's, it's really a balance between, um, you know, you, you don't want to let these bills rack up, but you also don't want to, if you have a 10-year-old and the bill's not paid, it's not necessarily their fault the bill's not paid. And so you don't want to say, oh no, I'm sorry, you can't eat today. Put your lunch back. Cause you have a, you know, a negative compound.
And so then just for the public's benefit, if the, the difference, what's left then just comes out of our general fund, fund 10. Is that right?
Um, it, no, it comes out of, of food service fund and it only would come out of fund 10 if our food service fund was running deficit. And right now, as you saw in the audit, we run about a million dollars. You know, but out of that food service fund is not just that. I mean, it's anytime we have to replace stoves or equipment and things like that. It's, it can be very expensive. Sometimes people will say, well, why do you have so much money in some of these funds? Well, nothing seems to be cheap anymore. So if we had to go in and replace a bunch of equipment in a kitchen, we could easily spend a few hundred thousand dollars for commercial equipment.
But something that's barely into five figures, um, for a district like ours, I would much rather see emphasis in lobbying to get cost of living adjustment, you know, tied to revenue caps instead. Instead of that. But, yes.
As, as the member of the board that will be voting on this stuff, so just to be clear, this is an obvious question, but neutral, I'm just not voting. I'm not saying anything about it.
Well, there's actually an abstain or.
Or abstain. Okay.
Yeah, that's an option.
Thank you.
Are we looking for action on this item or is it just information?
Yeah. Move to adopt the administration's recommendations for positions on these 12 resolutions.
So moved.
Motion by Rob, second by Kate. Barely got there a millisecond before Bob. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. And, uh, thank you for, uh, reading those and, uh, thank you Nick for your work on reviewing all of that. All right. The 2025 open enrollment space determination. This is Andrea and Tara, and this is something that we're obligated to do every year.
Yes.
We've, um, discussed it at length at a work session, but we have to take the formal action.
Yep. Pursuant to state statute and board policy 423, um, you have to make this, um, board, uh, annual determination in January. Um, and it's a recommendation consistent with the last several years that for purposes of, um, open enrollment, that we not have space limitations other than those defined, um, by, uh, special education. Uh, there is historical information, seven year history of where we've gone for the Hudson School District in terms of open enrollment, the number of, of applications received, denied, and then actually attending, um, again, over the last seven years. And then I'll turn it over to Tara.
Same recommendation as before in terms of special education, that we have zero spaces available.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move to approve is presented.
Second.
Motion by Rob, second by Lynn. Any further discussion on the open enrollment, uh, determinations for space? Hearing none. All those in favor of the recommendation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Next up is, uh, not an action item, but it's just a discussion about community conversation on January 7th. And Nick, you want to leave that off?
Sure. Uh, what you have is a document, uh, that has kind of how the responses were on the 24 different budget reduction items. Uh, and then there's a link to all the comments, the group comments as we, as we put that together. Uh, thank Tracy for putting this in a presentable format. Uh, as we started to look at, okay, is there a way to kind of bring some general themes in? It was a little more difficult than, uh, than, than thought when you're starting to talk about 24 different items with 30 different responses. We had about 30 groups. So just to kind of go back a little bit, uh, last Tuesday night, uh, we invited anybody from the public to provide feedback to the board on some of the budget reduction, um, options uh, available to the board. Uh, we did it in a format that was very similar to a format that we used for the community conversation when we had about 170 people also, uh, providing feedback, uh, on the direction of the district. And the reason we choose that format is, um, it allows one, much, much better discussion in smaller groups, but then two, uh, we utilize the Chromebooks to have them input the, the data. So we have, we can capture that, uh, that information. Um.
But to your comment about being similar, the way it was different was that the community conversation in April of 24, people actually registered for that and they were committed to three nights and 12 hours. Whereas, uh, this was, there was no required registration. We asked people to put their names on name tags. But there was no names assigned to the comments, for example, or people that were at individual tables.
Correct. Um, so my, I guess my thoughts on this is not necessarily to go through each of these or, or, um, you know, to go one by one through or, or thoughts, but I think the, the thought process was this kind of falls into, um, the next two agenda items, which are related to, does the board or does the board not go to referendum in April? the next two agenda items, which are related to, does the board or does the board not go to referendum in April? So they're kind of all kind of merged, I think somewhat, somewhat together. So you can kind of have topics on all of them all at once. As we, as you go through there, we did, we did ask, you know, the group questions. At the bottom, what type of information they have, should they try, you know, should you try again in April? Should you not try again? Type of thing, but I guess I would just open it up for your discussion and direction. Some, we did have a board member that asked, okay, you know, the next two items on the agenda, what's the difference between the two? Just as a reminder, the items on the agenda, F and G on the, on the agenda for tonight, aren't like, yes, you have to go to referendum or anything like that, but they had to be properly noticed. So that if you chose to go to referendum, we properly noticed them, gave you the proper wording and everything associated with them. The difference between the two, one is basically saying there's going to be an election. The other one saying, what's the election for? So that's kind of why there's two and they look almost identical to one another. The one thing that we did add for language, which was requested, was what would the language be if we went for a non-recurring? The difference being, you know, a time limit on, on a referendum versus into perpetuity type of thing. So with all those things being said, I will turn it over to you. How many wanted you to discuss?
Well, I guess first allow board members to comment, I think, because everyone was there, present for the entire hour and a half. And just some board members were there making observations, some answered questions. I guess I would lead off by just saying, I thought something that was relatively, you know, short time period to be able to get the word out about it and considering that there was Christmas and New Year's in between. I was very, very pleased with the turnout for it. And I would say as far as the responses, I wasn't, you know, really shocked by, you know, how they fell out. I think, you know, when some of the findings I would personally agree with and some I would not agree with, but it was certainly the summary of the responses from the various tables. And we had some tables where there might've been a strong dissenting person and that person, you know, was allowed to make individual feedback in addition. But each table had four to six people at it. So depending on whether it was four or six, that one individual might bring down, but it looked like there was an attempt at consensus, which I thought was very impressed with the discussion. Very impressed with the questions that were being asked from each and the commitment that was coming from the people. They definitely wanted to have their voice heard and they're want to see us have a strong school district. So other comments from board members?
Mr. President, I just thought it was really incredible that so many people came out on a January Tuesday and these are really hard conversations. Like this is unpleasant to talk about and people had the conversations I listened in on and the people I talked to was, a lot of people really committed to talking through difficult problems and trying to find a way to solve them. People were not angry. People were collaborative. People were thinking very deeply about the challenges our district faces. And so I'm really thankful to everybody who gave us their time and feedback.
Okay.
Mr. President, I was really impressed with not just the attendance, but the cross section of our community that was represented. I felt like, you know, we had seniors, we had young families, we had a really good representation. And I think those different groups coming together and learning about each other's perspectives was really impressive. So I was very pleasantly surprised by both the attendance and just how civil the dialogue was and how people were willing to really dig in and try to understand each other's perspectives.
Okay. Rob?
Yeah. And to build on, I guess what's been said so far, I went into the community event fully anticipating there was going to be that contingent that was just no to everything. I thought for sure there was going to be people who were, you know, just don't close my school. And certainly there was some of that, but overall I thought the group on whole was very objective. And I agree with everything that's been said so far. I thought people came together genuinely concerned about the school district's future. And I thought the, the feedback that we got was, was honest.
Yes, I, I would agree with that. And I think the other thing I was impressed with, just overall the tone too. When you compare it to our meeting in November of 22, when we were just having discussions about the budget deficits that we'd be looking at and the impact that closing facilities might have. It was not the same attempt to try and talk things through. Originally at that first meeting, it was much more, people wanted to be able to talk, but weren't, you know, there was people leaving the meeting after the same things were said 15 times over. Here, people stayed right through the end. In fact, there are some people that hung around afterwards. And I think just the whole idea, while it may not have garnered super support with the 170 people that were there, I think that there's a lot more understanding of why the, the the measure of possibly closing schools has to be discussed when you look at the size of our projected shortfalls. So I think that people have more accepted that logically it's just emotionally, it's still not a, not an easy conversation to have.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I, I would, I would agree with everything everyone has said. I think that the group that was there was much more understanding of the realities, the financial struggles that we're looking at. And also knowing that, you know, these aren't district created Hudson problems. These are, you know, funding issues from the state that everyone is dealing with. Understand the declining enrollments. I think the, the group that was there last week versus the group three years ago, that had kind of, no, it's going to turn around, you know, houses will be built. What we were looking at three years ago has pretty much been confirmed as far as, you know, birth rates didn't jump up. Low income housing hasn't, you know, increased significantly enough where we're getting more younger families. And so I was very happy to see that there was a more realistic look at it. And a lot of people saying, I get it's going to take a number of ways of looking at this. And I still, I still fear that there, you know, with the referendum going in the spring, that the, the public as a whole that aren't as aware of these financial concerns that would be looking at a referendum would be tied to keeping both schools open. That, that is very concerned that the misunderstanding would be like what we've seen in some of our neighboring communities where, oh jeez, we passed a referendum and now you're doing something completely different, you know, and so I, I don't know how we communicate that to the, the broad community in a better way. So that it's a big concern of mine.
Right. Well, I guess the one difference, so just to make sure that the record is clear, when we had that November meeting, which was a precursor to going to referendum in April of 23. Yes, we were talking about how do we resolve these future shortfalls and prior to that November of 22 meeting, we had consensus of the board that felt like, you know, closing one or two schools was pretty much a question of when, not if, all right? Then after the, I think it's fair to call it public outcry from the November of 22 meeting. We pretty much saw backing away from that, but folks sticking with a commitment that if the referendum did not pass in April of, or if it passed in April of 23, what I think almost all board members signed on for, it was a commitment not to close any schools for three years. If it passed, so that would have meant April of 26 would be the first time that if it had passed. Now, having said that, prior to the referendum, there was absolutely zero people from the community that stepped up and said, I will lead a vote yes campaign so that this thing passes. Nobody came forward and the operating referendum failed. So once it failed, then that meant that the board was not held to its collective promise of not closing schools for three years. Now, the board did not immediately go to closing schools and instead waited a year and a half to come back to a referendum. And I know that there was a comment and typically we don't comment on the comments made in public comments. But again, just to be clear, the the statistics that I've seen is that November referendums don't have a higher chance of loss or a lower chance of success, depending on how you look at it, just because they're during presidential elections. In fact, over 80% of the referendums that went this last November did pass for operating. So that's, that's a fact. Is, am I correct, Nick? 81%. So thank you. I knew it was over 80. I didn't know how much over 80. So it was 81% passed in November. So it wasn't the timing of it when it had, in the days of, you know, picking the second Saturday of February for your referendum are gone because the legislature changed that, changed that several years ago. And so if we don't go in April of 25, we have to wait until the very earliest we could do after that would be February of 26. So anyway, we went in November. Again, the public knew that enrollment hadn't changed. In fact, the projections got worse. And it's true that prior demographers had been more optimistic of enrollment growth. Unfortunately, you know, things change. Stuff happens like the great recession of 08 had a huge impact on the demographic information. And then cultural changes have also changed it. So unfortunately, the last two projections, and usually when they do enrollment projections, they do a high, medium and low. That's what our previous demographers, whether it's UW Madison or other highly skilled and experienced demographers use that high, medium, low. And even the low of our last three demographers have been higher than what we've actually had. So they couldn't, you know, be pessimistic enough evidently, but that's, and, and again, it's not because of the performance of our school. This is true. Enrollments are down all over. Wausau just closed four elementary school in one vote on one night at a meeting. So those are the realities. And despite the fact that enrollment wasn't going up and despite the fact that the state legislature didn't use the $4 billion, any of the $4 billion that it has in surplus to be able to help out education when they uncoupled it to the cost of living back in 2010 or 11, we still did not have anybody from the community step up and say, I will lead a vote yes group. So two opportunities to do it, nobody came forward.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I do want to say there was a vote yes committee in April for the April of 23 election. So just for the people who were outdoor knocking and got those yellow signs out that had the yes, yes with the check marks. So
Okay.
I just, people put in a lot of time and effort. So, but they didn't this November. Sorry. It was a long time ago. It's hard to remember.
Yes. And I don't remember that because I guess they were half successful, right? Because one referendum did pass and the operational did not. But what I'm hearing in the comments is, and heard at the meeting, are the things that I've heard out on the street, people that said, I don't like the idea of it being a forever increase, you know, being recurring. We want to see some kind of end on it. And so that's what we saw in these comments and some other people. So maybe that's a difference that we put. And I see that the resolution that was drafted, it's a proposed resolution, it can be amended, makes this a reoccurring as opposed to non-reoccurring, doesn't put any end date on it. And you know, I just throw it out there. There's obviously six other board members here. So you guys go ahead and discuss about, you know, what you would like to see, whether any action be taken on this or not.
Mr. President?
All right. It's, Rob, go ahead.
Thank you. And so I, I spent a little bit of time going through the results of the group that visited with us earlier in the month. And, you know, I think generally speaking, the public was aligned with where we'd be willing to consider cutting and where we weren't. Where I spent most of my time was on the very last question, you know, do you think the board should try and pursue an operational referendum in April? And you'll see 21% said no, the difference said yes. But then as you get into the comments and there were 176 responses, 86 provided responses of that 176. And as you go through them, it was comments about supporting, but don't close my school. Or supporting, but it's, it's just too much money. And yet it was, it was $2 per 100,000 or something?
One, one dollar.
One dollar. And so
So it was $5 for a half million dollar house.
And so the, the takeaway for me is that the group that we had earlier in the month, those people, I would argue are people that are probably following what the district is doing probably more closely than others. And even that group was struggling a bit with how much, not all, but some.
Rob, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
What group are you talking about?
Uh, the community group we just had.
On the seventh?
Correct.
Okay. I didn't know. I was thinking group.
I'm sorry.
No.
Yep. And so here it says 86, oh, I'm, okay. So it's 86 for that.
Yeah. So it's two different ones. We wanted to make sure that you can have the individual responses trump the group one that was not on itself.
Yep. And so if you go to the very, again, if you go to that, that question, where there are 176 responses, even though they show 79 people saying yes, I would argue that that 79% is contingent on either don't closing my schools or some other piece. And it all gets back to that need to educate. And I, I don't think we have enough time to educate the public properly, even with the vote, we'd have to educate the vote yes group. And I don't think we just have enough time, especially with the amount of money that we're talking about. And I could be mistaken. I think the non-recurring versus recurring is certainly an item. I'm just struggling with whether we go in April or not.
Sure. But I just, it's a lot of money. What are you talking about again? Which, what, what is, when you say it?
The referendum, the ask that will be presenting to the public if we go to referendum.
Okay. You mean asking for that, the ceiling be raised 5 million?
5 million or 6 million or whatever it is we choose to do to increase the revenue limit.
All right. I just wanted to be clear on that. Yes. Molly, you were?
Thank you. I I have a problem with a non-recurring. When we talk about a dollar per 500, or excuse me, a dollar per $100,000 worth of value. So we'll just half a million, $5. That's over an entire year, $5. If we can't get a yes on that, I don't know what the problem is. Basing a financial budget and projections on a non-recurring funding is bad policy. If the, if we're counting on the state somehow to decide that they're going to back pay or they're going to change what they do or even keep that $325 extra they gave last year with the, which the people are challenging in court, we might lose it. If we actually think that's going to happen, I think we're living in fantasy land. In 2009, they, they took away the interest CPI, right? Sorry, coupling it with increases with inflation. And we know that we wouldn't have this problem if they had not done that or even done half of it. So by my calculations, that's 16 years and they've done nothing. So it's become up to us as a community to decide if we want to fund this or not. That's why I think, you know, if we think the legislature is going to come through for us in 10 years, I don't think that's going to happen. And then what we've done is we've pushed this down for the next board to have to deal with. More than likely, most of us will not with, who more than likely, most of us will not be on the board then. One more thing, if I can remember what it was. Derailed my brain. Jeez. The other thing, I just really feel like painful moment. In my mind, we are gonna have budget cuts and a referendum. We cannot get to budget cuts. There are lots of things in here that I, I think there are a few that we can all agree on, that teachers agree on, the community group agreed on, oops, excuse me. And we, when we talked at our last boardwork session and what we feel like, what are the things that are sacrosanct and what do they feel like the things that we can probably nibble at a little bit? I think we can find some things, but I don't think we're gonna find all of it in there. You know, maybe we can, we have the twelve million dollars beyond the twenty to thirty percent that we should have in our general fund. We can use some of that to tide us over. We need to be really careful about that. As our auditor said, we need to be careful about how we do that. If we, you know, use all that money, we have none left. We have basically put ourselves in a terrible financial position. So, it's just going to be, we need more money, we're gonna have cuts, we are probably gonna have to close the school. It's just the way it's gonna have to be, one or two. And, you know, I know some people don't want to hear that it's sad, but it is sad. None of us want to do that, but I feel like that's where we're at and we need to go to referendum. We ask, if people say no, they say no. We ask again. We keep asking because this is, this is the only way we get funding. We can't magic up some money. So, sorry, guys, I feel really passionate about this, that we have to get this right.
Mr. President?
Uh, I, I do agree with Molly. I, I'm concerned about the, like I mentioned earlier, about if the public understands of what a vote yes means, that it's, it's not a guarantee. I don't think any of us should be putting a guarantee on it to, that that is, the main goals is to keep all schools open. When you, when you look at the inefficiencies, we're expected to run an efficient district and keep it in the black, yet the biggest glaring inefficiency is Willow River having a hundred thousand square feet and having two hundred and whatever students in it, when we know that if other, if you were building a new school today with a hundred thousand square feet, it would have over five hundred students in it. I have said for years that Holton, if there was reason to believe that growth was happening in Holton and there was going to be development and water treatment plant up there and smaller lots, you know, that's what I thought twenty years ago, was, it was gonna be obvious. It hasn't developed and I don't see it will in the, in the near future. But my real concern is to be fair to all of our students across our district, to our parents, to our staff, and small class sizes in Holton, which is not by design, which is by the, the number of students we have and our resistance to redrawing boundaries to adjust for it, it is continuing to be unfair to everyone in our district that Holton has smaller class sizes to the point of, you know, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, whatever it is, and EP Rock has twenty-three, twenty-four with a bunch of IEPs. You know, I, I'll, I'll never stop saying it, it's, that's not efficient and it's because it's a two-section school and it's, it's in a spot. Yes, wonderful school, wonderful teachers. I've heard people say, well, if you're close schools, we lose all these wonderful teachers, then you can't do that. We're not losing the teachers. We're losing a building. And I, I think it's ignorant of us as a board to not try and get that message out there that this is what is happening in many districts and to say, you know, let's make an investment, I'm willing to make an investment as a community member, you know, to get smaller sizes for, for all of our schools? Well, they, they're voting down our referendums. If we put a referendum out there to lower all class sizes to be similar to Holton, you know, so welcome other comments, but, but to me, it's, we have to do what's right for the district and we have to look at the glaring inefficiencies when we are being asked to run tighter and tighter and we have made cuts and to get the community to understand it, but it's, it's gonna be a combination of things. It's, I can't go to, I wouldn't vote or go to referendum with the promise that we're keeping all schools open.
Mr. President?
Well, Kate's up next and then she hasn't spoken on this subject yet.
So, I mean, I, we've gone to referendum now twice. So, the, and last time it being five dollars a year, what that tells me is that it's not about the money for our community. It's about making some hard decisions for our school. And I think that we need to work together as a community. We need to gain a trust in our community because clearly we're lacking some of that if we've had two no votes. I think we need this year to work together. I would not support a referendum next, in April. We just had a community meeting and today we're, last week, and today is a vote for a referendum. I just, I don't think that's enough time for a household to make such a big decision, let alone a school board. So, it's my opinion, we need to, the community needs to see us working with them. We need their input. I was talking to somebody last night who was giving me ideas and I said, we can't welcome ideas more. We need to be talking with you and we need to hear them. They might not work, but everybody in this community has a voice. We need to lobby our legislators. We have that coming up in March where we can go down to the Capitol and lobby them. I think we need to be doing a lot more of that. And I don't think it's necessarily a matter of our community understanding because I think they do. They're just looking for maybe a different direction. So, I think we need to take this year and really come up with a good strategic plan before we're putting out another ask.
Right. And again, did you want to say anything? Otherwise, I'm ready for another comment, but you go ahead.
Yeah, I think, you know, thanks for everyone who's spoken on this issue. I, one comment that stood out to me last week at one of the tables I was at was, if you don't go to referendum, it's automatically, you know, right? Like, we're not gonna get any money. I think there's, I totally see your point, Kate. We've gotten two no votes, so people are like, don't do it. I think sometimes, you know, not to be like my children asking for a movie night over and over again, but there, it's not like that, but it, it is like, if we don't ask, does it mean we really don't need the money if we don't keep asking? You know, like what kind of signal does that send as well? Because we're still facing this budget issue and I know, you know, we could have some cuts, we could cut some things. I worry that it can feel like, I don't want it to feel like a punishment, like you didn't pass it, so now we're cutting things. Do, we need a mix of new revenues and cuts to be solvent moving forward if we're gonna continue to provide the quality of education we currently do, right? I think there are, you know, to Bob's point, you know, what are, we're at sixty-two percent capacity in our grade schools right now. Like, I have a fourth grader at Willow, I'm gonna have a kindergartner at Holton next year. Like, these are, these are not schools that I want to close. My children go to or will be going to these schools, right? Like, they are near and dear to my heart. I also see that parents and students love all of our grade schools and my children would be okay if they went to one of our other grade schools. Like, it would be hard, but we can do hard things. These are all wonderful schools. So, we can't make a promise. I've told people that, like, even if we pass a five-million-dollar referendum, there's no, we cannot guarantee anything in terms of schools staying open. But I worry if we don't go to referendum, what is, if we go to referendum and it doesn't pass this year, then we just go again in April of next year. I feel like unless something changes in Madison, which I don't think it's gonna do, though I agree we should do more, we need to be doing more with our rep and our senator. I worry that we're gonna be running a budget deficit. I worry we send a message that we didn't really need the money anyway. And I really don't like the idea of a non-reoccurring referendum. I, I do worry we kick the can down the road for some other board to all of a sudden have to find five million dollars of cuts if they can't pass a high-stakes referendum. It sort of makes me sick to, to put that on someone else's back later. So, yeah.
All right.
Mr. Jamie?
What's that?
I, and I'm, I know I've kind of sounded in two ways, you know, I don't want to go to referendum with a poor message. I do want to go to referendum because the, the need is there, as long as it's clearly, clearly so we don't get caught where, where you sold, you sold us bill of goods, you know? And what we, I think what we learned from the last election, and yes, there was a lot on the ballot and a lot of, you know, noise that would prevent a clear understanding of, of what, what we were looking for. But, you know, as, as far as relying on, on us or even our community putting on pressure on legislators, I, I don't know. I mean, elections have consequences and I, I don't, what is, what is to show that, that they're willing, you know, to make any movements to help out districts like ours that are in, in a similar but yet unique situation? So, in my mind, too, it's, it's kind of irresponsible not to go to referendum for, for the operational money that we need to keep pace with the poor funding formula that is crippling our district and many other districts across the state. And until, until, I hate to say it, but until districts are failing, I don't expect anything's gonna happen with funding, but maybe I'm wrong.
All right. I just want to, I think we should correct something again, as far as we're talking about this five million dollars being, whether it's five dollars or one dollar. That's not, you know, that would be the difference on what we're already paying and what it would be for that additional five based on the mill rate. The mill rates been actually going down, even though our revenues are going up, the mill rate's going down because we have a bigger tax base, all right? And I, I get where some of those folks who are on limited incomes, they, they don't like necessarily being labeled anti-education just because they don't want to see their property taxes go up. They want to see us making hard efforts to, you know, cut where we can, can cut inefficiencies. I mean, I'm in that category of homeowners that have been in their place for, in my case, twenty-four years, and I've seen my overall taxes more than double in that time. So, I get that. Here, here's where I'm coming from on the non-reoccurring and how this, we could, we have to, I think one thing that is common understanding here is that this is gonna take a combination of cuts and revenue, all right? And we have to, I don't know that we've lost trust because it's not like, I remember a referendum that Bob and I worked on as citizens that lost seventy-two to twenty-eight. Now, that's a loss of trust. That is overwhelming, you know, overwhelming defeat. This was fifty-two and a half to forty-seven and a half. All we would have to do is educate two-point-six percent of the committee. And if we had that vote yes committee that now, I've, it's not just the folks that are here tonight that have said that they would be on that, but I've gotten emails from people that said that they would be part of it. It is time for a new generation to step up, all right? I was part of that, you know, one-point-one million or whatever it was, one-point-two million that we raised the ceiling back in two thousand, and that's when I had three kids in this district. Now, twenty-five years later, we're asking for, you know, five million in the, in the ceiling. The thing that people don't, they, they have sometimes short memories about what happened. They don't recognize that for twenty years, we didn't use that one-point-one million that the voters, you know, said that we could utilize if we needed it. We didn't need it, so we didn't use it. And I'm, I have confidence in future boards. I'm not gonna be on the board in, you know, more than four months, so there was gonna be hard decisions that have been made, but I also believe that if you don't put it on the ballot, then you're ensuring that you're not going to get, give the community that opportunity to have that voice. To me, there's no downside to having the referendum defeated versus not putting on the ballot at all. If it's defeated, then you just go again another time. The reason that I would put this on for a six-year non-reoccurring is that gives us then six years out. Right now, we're projecting our budget out, what, four or five years? That's about the best we can do. And we know that when you get to that last year, the number is pretty big, seven and a half million. It's more than what all the cuts add them up are not going to do it. But I think that we put it as a six-year non-reoccurring. Part of it is the hope that enrollments are, will go up, all right? Part of it is the hope that legislators in Madison will see the light and use some of that four billion that they have in surplus towards education. That could happen. But also, it gives us that opportunity and we tell the people that in four years, we're gonna come back with a recurring referendum before this six-year non-recurring expires because I do agree that I don't want to go on two or three years and then come back in two or three years. I think that, I'm confident that a good board can show that they can do a combination of cuts and with the revenue and only use the revenue if you need it. So, if you ask for a five-million-dollar increase and you only need one-point-one for next year to balance next year's budget because you come up with another one-point-one million in cuts, you gain trust of the community that way and you've shown that you've done cuts and raises with the, the revenue and provide a balanced budget. So, that's what I would do is go for a six-year, no more than five million on the ceiling, but tell people we will be coming back in four years to try and get a recurring if we need it. Again, economic projections could change, enrollments could change, and maybe it ends up that we don't need the five million after that fourth year. Maybe we only need three million or two million or one million or none because we've taken the other steps for cuts, whether that's closing buildings, whether it's, you know, going on a cleaning schedule every other day is not gonna come up with seven-point-nine million.
Mr. President?
It's not. Yes, Rob?
And so, I, I fully agree, we need, we need the revenue, no question. The, the thing that I struggle with is we say yes to a referendum, we've failed twice. How do we in three months not only educate, which is a continuation of the education that's been done, but at this point, and probably even more importantly, as Kate said, build trust? We can certainly go back, but the, the more, the more you go and the more you fail, until you get to a point where you're able to educate and build trust enough where you can get something to pass, where people in the community will talk amongst, amongst themselves and build enough of a, a base that will help us pass this? It's, I mean, it's futile, in my opinion. And so, how do we educate?
I'm sorry, what's futile? Futile?
Going to referendum in April of twenty-five.
Well, not if it passes.
If it doesn't, if we go to referendum and how do we educate and build trust so that it does pass? What I'm suggesting is it's not going to pass.
Okay. You're, we don't know that.
That's my, it's my opinion.
Yeah, and I give our public the, the ability to, to learn on a subject and be educated and then vote. If they say no, then what we have is a whole year to educate them on why we need it.
But we've already had several months with the last two referenda to educate, to build trust, and we've not, we've not had success. So, what's gonna be different? And that's the thing that I'm struggling with. What will be different in the next three months over the last year and a half? I mean, and that's the thing that I'm really struggling with.
Well, I think a, a productive vote yes committee would be a difference and I also think making it non-recurring because I heard from not just one person, but from many people that said that forever thing was hard for me to take.
I agree that's a part of it. I would agree.
Lynn, were you gonna say something?
Mr. President, I agree with you on many fronts. Number one, I don't think we did a good job of educating and I think that's on us. And I do think we need a strong yes committee and people have approached me saying, I will be on the yes committee and I will meet and I will do the work that I need to do. And I'm talking about people who are influential, know a lot of people, have a lot of contacts. I think, I think with a good yes committee, that's exactly how we did it at the high school. I, I think it will be successful. I do agree with Jamie on a six-year non-reoccurring. I think. I think that that gives us some, some window and some time to work on the budget side of things. I feel like the blank check is kind of the term that I heard from people with, you know, it being a recurring, they want some control over their future taxes. And I think that gives us some time to do some of that hard work. I mean, there's, you know, let's just, let's just say if there's schools that are going to be closed, there's going to be a redistricting, there's going to be a, I mean, it will be a very vocal conversation because it just will. I mean, we saw what happened in November of 2022, right? So for me, I do support a six-year non-reoccurring. I support the 5 million and I support actively getting people involved in a yes committee who are going to help us ask our community and tell them what the need is. I don't think we did a good job.
Mr. President?
Yes, Megan?
I think one thing is if we're going to do non-reoccurring, I do an odd number of years. I do seven so that you come up in an even year where you'd have an April and a November election. So you don't just have one shot like we do this year. Because I think otherwise we set ourselves up for an even more high stakes situation down the road. At least you'd have a November and April and November. I think, I don't know that it's about a lack of trust. I, I think when you look at the ballot and you see $5 million, it is hard to believe that that would turn into like five or 10 or $20 for you. It is really hard to make that connection that it's going to be that small of an amount. And I think with the November election, I think it was very hard to break through to people. I think, you know, the newsletter comes in the mail, but people don't always read it. I'm a parent, I get, and I'm on the board. I get a lot of emails related to what's going on. Sometimes I'm overwhelmed with the emails, right? So I think, I do think that there are people who were not aware that the 5 million was not going to lead to a huge tax increase for them personally, right? So I don't think it's about a lack of trust, but I do think there is a little, we asked for 8 million and then we lower it to five and then it's so, you know, I've talked to a few people who are like, well, I always vote no the first couple of times because then they right-size it to the amount they actually needed. So I think as we keep asking for less, then people are like, see, you only needed three, right? So there's, it's, there's an element of that. And then maybe we really did only need it because then we cut other areas. Fair enough. I'm not saying that that view is wrong. But yeah, I think, I, I don't think it's futile, Rob. I think, you know, sometimes long, long education campaigns, people are like, why are you talking to me about this six months before the April election? You know, like to think that far ahead on an issue, people are busy with their lives. It's hard to dive in, you know, like we didn't have a lot of notice for this meeting last Tuesday and we had 170 people there. Like sometimes the long notice, I don't know that it helps or the long education campaign, it, it is more when things are immediate, people pay attention to it. You know what I'm saying?
I hope I'm wrong.
Mr. President?
Yes, Kate?
I want to say, the reason I say lack of trust is because we've had two referendums and two times people have said no. To me, that tells me they aren't trusting what we're doing. And I've heard it in the community and I've heard people say, the board keeps saying, we don't understand. And, and they're saying, gosh, we're pretty highly educated people here in Hudson. That feels kind of disrespectful and like you don't trust me or I don't trust you. So that's where that's coming from. I know I hear from different people than Bob or than, you know, and you vice versa. But that is what I'm hearing in our, in the public.
To answer your question, Rob, about how we build trust, we build trust by making cuts before the referendum. We say, because we're, we start talking about the next budget. We say, we are going to do these cuts whether the referendum passes or not. We've got three months to do that and we can, and the community that will follow us can see that we're putting, you know, following through on what we're committing to. So I, I think that if you, if you just say, we don't trust the community that they should make this decision instead of the seven of us. I think you're, I, I think that's wrong. I think that it is the, the community decides whether this passes. If they say no, and, and you're, you're right, Kate, that they vote the exact same way and it comes out exactly 52 and a half to 47 and a half again. What have we lost? Nothing. Cause we're still back in a situation where we're going to be back in April of '26. We will have made cuts hopefully. I mean, I'm, again, I'm not going to be on the board that approves the budget for the, for that 25, 26 school year, but it's going to have to be cuts. And thankfully, we've operated this district in a way that's fiscally responsible. We have a decent reserve. We're not in super high stakes. But by saying, we're going to punt, you raise those stakes by saying, we're just going to push this off to April of '26. And so I think having that option for the community to get educated, to be able to say, well, gosh, I, I didn't realize it would be that much. There are some that said, yeah, they knew that and they still were against it. There's going to be a percentage that will be against it no matter what, but when it was that close. If this had been 60, 40 for me, I would say definitely push it off to April of '26. But I think that it was close enough that this community can get educated on it and could understand that I'll go for a six or you want to do five or seven. I mean, some, some kind of, some kind of finite amount, seven years. And in those seven years, a lot, lot could happen because we can't get reliable projections really beyond four, five years. So, but I would, again, I would caution the board to just putting it out there in seven and not say that we're coming back because I think we come back, whether it's four years, five years, some period of time, don't wait until that seventh year before you go back to referendum. But show and build that trust that, that Kate's referring to by showing that we've made cuts. And, but make the cuts that don't necessarily harm kids' education. And I've already been on record back when we made that commitment about the first referendum and everything. You know, there were some that were willing to say, I'll never close schools. And I said, well, if that's the option versus cutting teachers, cutting, raising class sizes and cutting teacher pay, I'm not going to be in favor of those three things. But if we can not, I think that that harms student education more than reducing buildings. That's just anecdotal, but again, those are going to be tough decisions to make. But I think if this board goes ahead and tackles them and makes them, the community will respect that next time we come back to them before this seven-year period is done. But is there a motion to, to adopt a resolution to at least go to the election? Right? That's the first thing we would vote on? Yeah. So if you go with a non, a non-reoccurring, it would be essentially, you, you go to the second item up there and you would, you would read that item. But if you go with seven years instead of, it was written for 10, it was just a base, I think, just kind of a template. You would say seven years. So that would mean that it would be the 31, 32 school year instead of the 34, 35 school year. So you'd have to substitute a period of 10 years for a period of seven years. And you'd have to substitute 2034, 35 to the 2031, 32 school year, if that's what you want to do. Huh? Yeah. Yeah. I mean, that's, and then the, the second one, because it's a bunch of documents, we would fix all those. You would do the, you would just read the title on the second one. Because that is the setting of the election in general. So the first one is, this is what you're going for. The second one, you're just reading what Tim is highlighting there. This is the same thing you guys did and it, it, it doesn't need to, it's not a difference of revenue, non-reoccurring or reoccurring. When the final things are signed by Kate and Jamie, if it passes, it would make sure that it matches. If you choose to go non-reoccurring and for the dates, it's just, somebody asked for a non-reoccurring thing. My little counsel at about 2:30 this afternoon, that's, they don't, they can't turn this stuff around that quickly.
I think I got the, the year thing wrong. I was thinking calendar year instead of school year. So maybe we do go for even like eight or 10. I think six is too short. That worries me. Maybe we can do eight, but if it's going to be, if 10 years would be 34, 35, eight would be 32, 33. So you'd have November and April in the same year. Sorry, I was thinking calendar year. What? Yes. So 10 years is 34, 35. Six would be 32. Wait.
Six or eight?
Where's the math here? I'm, I'm getting tired.
Six would be 30, 31. Eight would be 32, 33.
Yeah. So those would all have November and April elections, right? We don't know. I can't think of it. I can't do the math that well right now.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Yes.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Is when they have the more, more opportunities. But when you said it, when you said a non-reoccurring referendum, it coincides with the school year, not necessarily a calendar year. Yep. You would have to, you would go back in the 2034 if you had a 34, 35. So that would give you April 34. Or April of 2030 if you had a 30, 31, six year. Whatever you'd like to do or not.
Can I ask a que- question, Mr. President?
Yes.
And I don't know if this is proper or not, but is there any appetite at all for any, anything other than a non-reoccurring? Do you, does anybody care to go through that exercise?
I, I won't support it.
A recurring? Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. A non, non-reoccurring. Recurring that would be.
She's talking about a recurring one.
A recurring. Sorry.
I don't have an appetite to do that. I would support a, I would go more than six years, I guess, based on the logic of how it would fall on, you know?
Well, six years would put it into an even year.
Okay.
That would be a gubernatorial year, not a presidential.
Got it.
If we go eight years, it would put it in a presidential year. I'd rather do it to 30, 31. Have it six years. Cause for those people that want to have some control from the community, I'd rather, I'd rather. That's, that's my recent rationale.
So you think six, you think, what do you think of 10? That would put it in a group, that would put it in congressional year.
The challenge you have with going 10 potentially is you've only got $5 million. And so you'd have to go back to referendum at, at a midpoint. I mean, you, districts do it. But that's the only thing we'd have to discuss.
Well, that's, I think what's killing Molly on this is that we're setting ourselves for, it seems like it's long enough, but it's not paying the bills. It's not enough to cover.
It's long enough for everyone to forget what happened. And it's long enough, I don't know. We, we were at this spot in, when I first got on the board in '21. The biggest things were, Bob, you should run for the board. We have no big issues. Thanks. Okay, thanks. We've been talking about this. And I mean, God bless our schools. We should have closed Holton. We should have, we should have done something years ago and our community, we should have passed the 8 million. There's a lot of should have, would have, could has here. And I am so worried about us getting to this. We're pushing it down the road and people are not going to remember it. Nobody gives a crap that 20 years we under-leaved. Who cares? Who cares? I mean, it, we feel proud of that and that's great that we were fiscally responsible. But when you're getting your tax bill and you're writing your check or, you know, paying it, you don't think that, boy, thank you. Thank you for being so fiscally responsible. It's just, I just think we're setting ourselves up and we're not being very brave about this and what the reality is. And I am having a really hard time stomaching doing a non-reoccurring. I don't know. And what is, I mean, I don't know. And I, I mean, I won't say.
I hear where you're coming from. Molly, it's, it's not an easy decision. But if the, if the choice is go for a non-reoccurring through the year 30, 31 or don't go at all, I go with the non-reoccurring from, through 30, 31. Cause I, and yes, is it potentially creating a financial cliff in 30, 31? It's possible. If future boards are not going to make any cuts or make the necessary cuts, yeah, we're going to run through, burn through our, the 5 million and then, and then some.
I think we, we try and be so careful, you know, to, to do things we can live with, be proud of, and it's good for the community as a whole. There are other communities all over the state that they are, they reboundry every year, you know? And we're, we've always, oh, that's a big, that's a big, you know, problem. There are school districts all over, you know, dealing with the financial situation and getting their operational, right sizing their school districts so they're fair and efficient. I, I, I'm disappointed that we, I think we vacillate a little bit and can't do what, what facilities task force has said, what a survey years ago have said, what the declining enrollment numbers and, and has proven to us, everything that we were looking at three years ago is true. I, I'd like to be proud of the decisions that I make as a board member, whether they're hard decisions or not. And I don't want to set future boards up for failure and I'm not criticizing past boards for decisions that they made. If, if, if it's with me, if it's the only way we're going to get to go to referendum again now is, is a non-reoccurring, I, I guess I would support that, but it's, to me, it's, it's, that would be a compromise and I'm willing to compromise to not put our financial security in jeopardy within two years or a year and a half and push it. Even though, I mean, we're no, we're no different than municipalities kicking the can down the road on street repair. You know, at some point, it's going to have to be kicked in. And what we haven't mentioned tonight is the legislature could veto the governor's or could overrule the governor's veto and you tack on another 1.5 in the first year. Does that 1.5 every year, Nick, or does that?
Right now, we have built into the budget an increase of $325 per pupil. So roughly 5,000 pupils times $325, about one and a half million dollars. You know, we, as the law of the land, as it sits right now, we're scheduled to get that every year. If the veto was overridden by the Supreme Court, then that goes away. It doesn't mean the legislature won't do something else. But there's no guarantee that, that's the only thing that we currently have built into the budget as far as an escalator or a continuing thing. So that would mean that if in, over the next four years, if it went away, instead of a $7 million deficit, you're looking, and the legislature didn't act, you'd be looking at more like about a $14 million deficit.
So if that happened, where would we be in six years?
You gotta remember, it would, it would not just hurt the, our district. It would hurt a lot of districts. So I, I would find it hard to believe legislature wouldn't do something. I just don't know if they would make us completely whole, but I, they would have to do something.
Mr. President?
Yes, Kate?
I guess I, I hear so many conflicting ideas. Reoccurring, non-reoccurring. If we do the non-reoccurring, we have the safety net of six or eight or 10 years. But we don't have the, in my opinion, we don't have the capacity to go back in that amount of time and ask for a recurring. That puts us at jeopardy, in jeopardy. I, I personally think all the more reason to put some more thought into this and go through the year and look at what we're looking at for cuts. And then come back together after we've talked about it through the year to decide very thoughtfully what we're going to present to the public.
Well, right now, we don't have any motion. So we don't have anything to vote on yet. But if there is a motion, I'll entertain it.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the language in the resolution to exceed the revenue cap commencing with the 2025, 2025.
approve the language in the resolution to exceed the revenue cap commencing with the 2025, 2026 school year. Do you need me to read all the rest of the language, I'm guessing? Be it resolved by the School Board of the School District of Hudson, St. Croix County, Wisconsin, that the final school budget, school district budget shall include an amount not to exceed $5 million in excess of the revenue limits imposed by section 121.91 of the Wisconsin statutes each year for a period of six years on a non-recurring basis, beginning with the 2025, 2026 school year and ending with the 2030, 2031 school year for the purpose of paying district operation, maintenance and staffing costs. Be it further resolved that pursuant to section 121 dot 91, parent three of the Wisconsin statutes, the foregoing resolution be submitted to the electors for approval or rejection at the election to be held on April 1st, 2025, adopted this 13th day of January, 2025.
Second.
Mr. President?
We have a motion, a second, and Rob, your question?
Yeah, and I just, I'd like to call for a roll call vote.
Okay. All right, is there any further discussion on the motion?
I have a question.
Yes.
So Jamie, you said that you think then go back in like four years and ask for a reoccurring referendum.
It could be four, it could be five, something before it expires.
So can you cancel the non-reoccurring? Because if I was a taxpayer, I'd be like, so now for one year, you're going to get your reoccurring and your non-reoccurring? Or what do you?
No, you, you would set it up so that the new referendum started. So you see how this one says it starts in '25, '26 school year? So if you went to referendum in '29, you could say that it's going to start commencing with the 31, 32 school year. So it doesn't have to start in that exact year. No, you wouldn't, you wouldn't set it up to double up. That's, I mean, you could do that, I, I think that'd be a very bad idea. Very bad idea.
I mean, I'm not totally thrilled with going down the non-reoccurring route as it is, but I want to see us on a path that shows we're trying to do both cuts and operate within a law. 80% of the districts, or more than 80%, it's almost 90 that are operating on some type of operational referendum increase since these caps were put into place. So it's not like we would be unique. If anything, our 1.1 million that we did 20, over 20 years ago, it's unique that it's only that amount compared to what our overall budget is. But any further discussion on this? All right, there was a request for a roll, roll call vote. Bowman?
Aye.
Brown?
No.
Garza?
Nay.
Powers? Robson?
Yes.
Rosowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
All right. So now we move to what's the next document since we have?
The, the next document, all, let's see, Tim will pull it up there. If there is a resolution, it would be, what, all that has to be read is, is the title. Everything else is just supporting documentation. That has to be cleaned up by February.
Okay. So the last one was just a resolution to exceed a revenue cap and the year it was to commence and for how long a period of time. That was it. That's all we voted on so far. This is what the resolution that actually puts it on the ballot to let the voters decide this.
Yep.
So read the title?
It would just be the title.
Mr. President, I make a motion for a resolution providing for a referendum election on the question of the approval of a resolution to exceed the district's revenue cap commencing with the 2025, 26 school year.
Second.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to call for a roll call vote.
Okay. Is there any further discussion, questions or anything like that? This time I'll take it in reverse order. Johnson, yes. Rosowski?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Powers?
I don't understand what I'm voting on here, I'm sorry. I don't understand this part.
So this is just saying that the last resolution that we passed, which was to exceed the cap for a period of six years commencing with the '25, '26 school year, that this be put on the ballot for the voters to decide. If we don't put it on the ballot, then the voters would not get a chance to vote on this.
So yes.
All right. So I'm sorry, your answer?
Yes.
Okay. Garza?
No.
Brown?
No.
Bowman?
Yes.
All right. So the, the motion passes on a 5-2 vote. And at this time, that concludes the items for discussion or agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Lynn, second. By Megan, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, we're adjourned.